Anyone wishing not to be seen on television may be excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We apologize, but the board has to go back into executive to finish meeting with our lawyers. So can I have a motion to move into executive?
Motion.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolve that pursuant to Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the public shall be excluded from that portion of the meeting involving legal matters, senior privilege, attorney-client privilege, and negotiations, update, and probably personnel. Further resolve that discussion of such subject matter in executive sessions can be disclosed to the public if any action is taken by the board either at the resumption of the public session, at the conclusion of the executive session, or at a public session at a later date. This executive session will last approximately 30 minutes. And action will be taken when the board resumes. So if you could give us another half hour, I'm sorry, to finish up.
Just to clarify, the board, as hopefully everyone knows at this point, is all volunteers. They've been here since six o'clock, meeting and working to try to prepare and get everything ready and set for you guys. And they, you know, notice it that way to try to prevent having the public wait. Unfortunately, tonight's business went over, so we are going to have to ask you to wait a little bit longer. So, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, could you wait in the lobby?
Yes.
Hi.
You want someone to call us up?
What?
Oh, call him. Let you do that.
Yeah. Scott.
Hello?
Scott.
Hey, good. You're on. Yeah, you're on speaker. I'm going to turn it up loud. You might want to mute yourself in case you start like hacking or something.
Okay. Okay. Um, we still are not finished our executive, but you don't have to leave. Um, we're going to go through our agenda and then right before we vote on items, we have to go back into executive to finish what we were talking about. Because almost the, I think the entire executive was just legal. So, we ha- any items of discussion?
Discussion items.
Discussion items for where?
We just have discussion items. There's no present- there are no presentations. Um, I'll just take a report on school community relations, which I think Mr. Sweeney is giving us tonight.
All right. On behalf of Mr. Distillio, um, our summer blood drive will take place on Tuesday, August 5th, in the boardroom at the central administration building. We are still in need of donors. All the donations collected at the blood drive contribute towards the units collected at the high school and will help them achieve a higher tier level and earn them a higher scholarship award for the year. To schedule an appointment, please contact Heather Sullivan at 856-589-6644, extension 6321. Again, that's 856-589-6644, extension 6321. Also, the Washington Township Education Foundation will hold their annual golf outing on Saturday, August 9th, at the White Oaks Country Club in Newfield, New Jersey. It's a great event for an even better cause: our teachers and students. All funds raised at the outing go directly to our teachers in the form of mini grants. There are different types of sponsorship available. If you would like to sign up to be a golfer or a sponsor, please contact Heather Sullivan, again at 856-589-6644, extension 6321. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to approve items of correspondence, numbers one and two?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the minutes for June 2025?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yes.
Julie, could you just put me abstaining for the June 10th meeting, uh, meeting minutes, please?
Yes. Got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, under old business, board goals update. So, first, um, every- the board met and had a retreat with our field service rep from New Jersey school boards. She did a training on the self-evaluation process and then everyone completed, just completed the self-evaluation process. So, she also did a presentation on creating goals. So, we can have her come to our next meeting. We have to give her a date. Have her come to our next meeting or we can have another retreat in early August. That's something we don't have to decide at this minute. We can, I can send an email out about that. Um, but that's the progress with that. Um, and so now we have reports, um, from committees, starting with instructional affairs. Mrs. Blough.
Before I do it, Annette, I just love those kindergarten videos that they have for children who are going into kindergarten in the fall. I don't know if anybody out there saw them, but they're cute ones for each school that you can watch with your child to see what the school is like before they have teacher, uh, meet the teacher later in August. But thank you for that. Okay. At the meeting, it was, I was there, Ms. Casempel, Ms. Gromaldi, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Hartung, Mr. Distillio, and Mrs. Clancy. Um, Ms. Casempel was just there for part of the meeting because we had more than one meeting going on. We discussed the use of Danielson evaluations, um, for all certified staff. The staff is going over that this summer, specifically the administrators. And out of that, they had, came up with a digital handbook developed to make access to key topics easier to locate and use for observations. Um, they also had, that there was an annual training session for that, for all the administrators, which was held to review the observation methods that we use. For professional development days for the WTEA and WTSSPA, that was reviewed and there was some money, I think we actually have a specific amount of money, correct, for the years from June 2025 to June 2026, which is nice to have a, a limit as to how we're going to spend that money. Uh, curriculum writing included various subjects, areas were discussed, including high school science classes, the adoption of new K through five English, uh, English language arts program, and a revised fifth grade health curriculum. And that came about because apparently they've done away with the DARE program. I didn't know about that, but I get that impression, correct? Mrs. Miller, is that correct? The DARE program?
Yeah. And, um, I'm looking for the minutes right now, correct?
Okay. A meeting was held with, um, a group of staff from the high school. They were all volunteers from secondary staff and they discussed and are going to revise the grading policy at the high school. Mr. Distillio discussed the implementation of internships for some students in the community at various businesses for the upcoming school year. The committee also discussed briefly, based on our questions, vocational education possibilities for our students in Washington Township. Mr. Distillio will explore how this is done in a neighboring school district and how we can move towards providing these options for our students sometime in the future. There's no date in mind or year in mind. The Junior High National Honor Society, I think that had been brought up by Mrs. Baker. That was discussed too. And after research by Mrs. Miller and Mrs. Gerber, it's not that you just do it. It involves a cost and we don't really have the cost right now, the money for that. But I wasn't aware of the fact, but some of you with children in the middle school may be a bit aware of the ambassadors program. And Mr. Distillio told us how that really is a program that, that's not the same but similar in participation and that they're going to use that program to help with the transition program from, uh, elementary school to middle school. They're going to use some of those students in all three of the middle schools. Also, the code of conduct policies are being reviewed and updated. And the other things I have from IA.
I have a question. I have a question. Mrs. Miller, what would the cost be to, um, have a, uh, Junior National Honor Society in the middle schools? What, what would the exact cost be?
I, I don't have that. I'd have to research that with Mrs. Gerber.
Thank you.
We can bring that to committee, Connie.
Any other questions about IA?
No, I just think we had a pretty, we had a pretty involved discussion, I thought, at our IA meeting as to the reason why.
Yeah, the, the discussion was involved. My question is, what is the cost?
Yeah, I wasn't at IA. I was at a different committee meeting. I think that's what, what the confusion is.
Yeah, that might be Mrs. Gerber then.
Yes. And she'd be more than happy to answer that.
Yeah, what I understood from that involved discussion, that we couldn't do it because it was costly.
Yep.
And I'm asking, what was the cost?
Okay.
I have a question. Do we have any updates? You may have said this. I apologize if I missed it. On the grading four policy and changing that?
I don't know. There, there's anything. Mrs. Miller would have to talk about that or Mrs. Gerber.
We absolutely have had, Mrs. Gerber actually just convened a meeting with staff. She'll be writing a report out at, um, committee. I did talk to her in her absence. I'm going to make sure and give her the respect and the committee members the respect that, that they deserve for doing the hard work. They came in during their summer break. Um, this just, this just occurred. I know it was a very positive outcome and, um, so at committee, we'll have that in instructional affairs. I believe that was her intent.
Okay. Next up, business committee. Um, report, I think Janine, are you giving that tonight?
Janine, what I'll do is I'll give seven eight and then I'll turn it over to you for seven sixteen, because I was unable to make that meeting.
Sure.
Any other one? Thank you for coming out. So, for seven eight, the evening of seven eight, the attendees were, as far as the BOE goes, Mr. La Liberty, myself, and President Casempel. The administrators were Janine Wechter and Mrs. Miller. Um, we discussed some purchasing items, RFP schedule and which professionals have already been appointed, which ones were still left to appoint in the month of July. I believe both are on the agenda today. Other RFPs and bids, our solar power purchase agreement was discussed. Additional resolutions will be coming down the pipeline and are in the queue for some co-op purchasing groups. There will be a resolution to increase the bid threshold, which I believe is on the agenda for tonight. Uh, we discussed, as far under policy, sub, sub items or under policy subsection, the committee discussed having a different negotiator and solicitor. We, we did reach out, when did we reach out to Strauss Esme for their advice? I just want to give the public an approximate date.
So, that was shortly after our last board meeting.
Okay. So, after that meeting, we did reach out to Strauss Esme to see if they have any guidance on whether the negotiator and the solicitor should be separate. There, to my knowledge, there wasn't any, any administrative share, correct me if I'm wrong. Board members, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think, I think what we found is that, um, the, the policy, that, that's part of our policy manual, a lot of the language was developed by us. So, we shared a copy of the current policy and a copy of the template policy from Strauss Esme.
Understood. All right, thank you. Under the budget subsection, we have, we discussed some planning items, changes in responsibilities, some budgeting ideas. Excuse me, sorry. The committee also discussed possible changes to Title I funding and how we can maximize the utilization of those funds. And we also discussed the sale of the central admin building and what that process would look like. So, continuing that dialogue. The second business committee meeting we had, I was unfortunately unable to attend due to professional obligations. And I'm going to turn it over to Janine now to provide that update. Or Scott, who is on the phone, he doesn't sound too well, but Scott, if you want to read those minutes off, please do, sir.
I'll let Janine do it.
Yeah. At least enough sponsor class. I didn't want to steal anyone's thunder. Um, okay, so we had a, an extra business committee on the 16th, mainly because of the solar project, um, that we're hopefully preparing to do. Um, there's a lot of timelines involved with that. So, we had our engineers, Remington and Vernick, and, um, our energy company, DCO Energy, available to discuss the proposals we received and the review process we went through. Um, we discussed the timeline and how, um, the investment tax credit could affect that timeline. Um, we received an alternate proposal, so the original, um, plan that was in our RFP for We received an alternate proposal, so the original plan that was in our RFP for solar, we also asked anybody who put in a proposal if they wanted to provide alternates, which would even give us, you know, a better, a better solar system. We also talked about the savings that we would see throughout the project and the review process for all the proposals we received, which involved members of administration and members of our engineering team and our energy company. We also had upcoming purchasing items, which was a reminder of the meeting. For our remaining professionals, which was engineering services and auditor services. For both of those, we received multiple proposals, which was good, because the last time we did these two, we didn't, we didn't get any proposals. And we have recommendations on the agenda for tonight. The proposal for engineering services, all of the proposals were competitively, competitively priced and rated. That, that's how we came up with our recommendation. And the review of proposals for auditor services, we actually received a proposal that gives us a 20% reduction of our, our fee for the year. We also just discussed the policy 0176 that Steve also brought up. Again, just a reminder that at some point, we have to look at the, our existing policy and the template policy from Strauss Esme and figure out where we're going to meet in the middle and what language we want to end up with. That was it.
Thank you. Any questions for the members of the business committee?
Yeah, I have a question. So I see McNally was 20% cheaper for audit services, and we have a couple of specific line items that they're going to be helping us out with. Did we factor in the cost of turnover and the cost that they would bill us for both entities to be in communication with each other constantly?
So that's all built into the price? So the, the price that you say on the list, they don't charge us anything else? So the, the price that, that they quoted us, that's all we'll get billed for? So that's factored in?
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question on that. We're not recommending the auditor that we have now. Is that correct?
So the, the recommendation, if you look at, let me just go to the agenda.
Thirty, thirty-one?
I, I, I read that, but for the.
Item thirty-one.
For the bulk of it, we're not recommending the auditor we had last year.
So for the, so if you look at the, the scoring sheet, for the preparation, preparation of the CAFR financial statements, audit of the financial records, and audit of the application for state school aid, and the district report of transported students, which is two of our annual reports that get audited, and the timing is a little bit different, which is why it's a separate fee. Those three fees were 20% lower with Holt McNally. The other two services was the maintenance of the district's Section 125 plan for twenty, the calendar year 2026, and consulting services, which is the preparation of a continuing disclosure report that we're required to do every year. So those services would stay with Bowman and Company.
So my question is.
share is the timeline of, per our policy, which companies would be up for RFP, because we do them every three years. So we talk about that in November. The past couple of years since the policy changed, we also talk about it again in January and February, because we want to make sure if there's new board members that come on in January, they're aware of our policy and they can weigh in on it. So back in January and February, I believe there was four that we were doing this year, which was auditor, engineer, health insurance, and solicitor and negotiator. So, so those were done very early in the year. So it's for a completely different audit year.
So, if, if I may.
Yeah.
Just a reminder that audit, auditor, auditing services, there's a professional service.
Right.
So the board has very large discretion as to who they want to use and who they want to go with, and there need not be an RFP process. I think there's a board policy that requires you to go out to RFP every three years perhaps, and that's why I think the RFP process was initiated. And as a result of that RFP process, I think your administration is making a recommendation to go with one party over the other. My understanding is that both of the people who submitted bids were qualified, and, you know, certainly the board has discretion to, to go in the direction that it wants to go.
I understand all that. Okay. My question is that the present auditor that we have came up with a, quite a number of things that are wrong in their audit, in the audit that they presented, the lateness of it, the not having the material and all. And for those, for that auditor, we're not recommended for next year, because he came up with a lot of problems. Does that have anything to do with the decision?
That's not the reason. We followed the RFP process, and if you looked at the proposals and the sheet, and, and the business committee participated in the meeting. We went over all that.
Who was the business committee meeting?
Scott, Scott, I think Connie was there.
Yeah.
You took the place of Ralph, yes.
Yeah. You took the place of Ralph.
Scott and Connie were.
I think Julie was there. I don't know if you were present.
Julie wasn't there. I was the only one left when you brought that up.
The conversation. Or is that, am I looking at that wrong?
I think you just, so you have to separate the three, the three audit fees from the other two? So if you're looking at the savings and the audit fee, it's 22,500 dollars.
Okay. So if we go with the recommendation, you said we're saving 22,000 dollars?
Yeah, 22,500.
So maybe the board can consider putting back some student activities that may not be on the docket for this year with the 22,000 dollars? Just a consideration.
Did you want to talk to Scott?
Yeah. I am on the business committee. So the RFP proposals, the fact that we're saving that much money with both terms being qualified, I think we have to go, especially to the economic climate we're in right now, it'd be foolish not to take the lower bid. Both are qualified, and with both of them, we're going to get the qualified opinion that's necessary to meet our statutory obligations. So why wouldn't we go with the cheaper one?
And, and I was in the business committee. I believe, Janine, when we looked at the RFP, that the rating sheets, I think you already said this, they were equal. Except for the one company was a little bit more than 22,000 dollars more expensive. So in speaking with our attorney and, and as well as tonight, your, your input is, we have to, we are advised to follow our own RFP process. That, that's what we've been.
What, what meeting are you referring to?
The business committee.
Okay, because I never saw any of that stuff.
We didn't, we, the rating sheets for auditor were done in-house. They weren't, we were given the scoring sheets for the three RFP.
Solicitor.
Solicitor.
And negotiator.
And negotiator, so two. The other ones, Janine took care of in-house. So we did, we never saw those scoring sheets. At least, I never did.
So just to clarify, sometimes these types of decisions can lead to challenges and potential litigation and liability. And if there's any questions about that, suggest that we discuss it further in closed session. In terms of, we're, as a board council, we're not going to, we're not recommending one or the other. The board has discretion to choose which one it wants. There's certainly, you know, I, I'm not familiar with these two applications or bids or, but, or proposals. Sometimes things like number of school board clients or years of experience, other things like that, might make a difference. But certainly, it's the board's discretion to go with whom they want, because it's a professional service. It's unlike other things that go out to bid in which the board, with very few exceptions, must go with the lowest price, so.
And just real quick to Aaron's point, we have gotten legal advice on this, so I, I do recommend that we talk about this when we go back into executive session, because we have gotten legal advice in the past that we haven't followed, and, and it's been an issue, so.
There was not a deletion. You're saying it just never showed up?
Correct. Because we never, we didn't have it scored in time for the business committee.
Okay.
So we always, what our process is, is we open it up and we make sure we can score it and review it. And then on the business committee agenda, so if you look at the, the business committee from, from the sixteenth, from July 16th, what we always do is put all the proposals, so everybody can see the proposals, not just the business committee. So if you look at the July 16th business committee, they're all there. For June, the June business committee, auditor and engineer, and the solar, were not ready. So all three of those were discussed in July.
So then, so then the business committee never recommended.
Didn't talk about it in June, it wasn't, it wasn't complete yet.
Okay, there was no recommendation. Okay.
Can, can we, can we just go back to 22,000 dollars again? Janine, is there a way, if the board decides to go with the company you're recommending, and we have that 22,000 dollars of seedings, is there a way to earmark that money for, to directly help students? There's a lot of things that were affected. I'm saying, is there a way that we can do that, or no?
So if, what we would have to do, if it, if it was the recommend, if it was the recommendation of the board to utilize that money, I would have to, you know, you could just tell me and I would make a budget transfer to the appropriate lines. And then we would just have to reinstitute whatever it was that the board wanted.
So in essence, then, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be saving the money, we'd be taking the money and putting it somewhere else.
That, that would be up to the board.
Right. That hopefully will be towards.
For the students, which is supposed to be our priority.
I'm just answering the questions, Connie.
I think it's turning into this discussion about this 22,000 dollars, is it going to help students?
Just a question.
If there's one area where we can't use, like, if there's one area that we should be focused on, it's finances and the audit.
Correct.
And I think that what some of us on the business committee had a problem with is that we never went over the audit report, we never addressed any of the findings in the audit report, and now here, we're taking the auditor for a new one that we've never heard of, and none of us agreed to that.
Yeah, that's my concern.
So that's, that's what I'm trying to say here. It's being painted as if you're, if you vote for it, you don't care about kids, and that's not true.
I definitely didn't say that.
I know you didn't say that, but I'm, I'm voicing this concern.
Let's discuss this more when we go into executive.
And I just wanted to add one more thing. So Bowman and Company did the audit of the 2324 fiscal year, so if you wanted to hear another report, that could absolutely happen, because that's completely separate. Bowman and Company did 2324, moving, it would, the, the other company would be doing future audits. So if you wanted to hear more or invite that person back, you could still do that.
Yeah, we, we never did have, we never did have the report.
It wouldn't prevent you from having, well, the auditor came, remember, to the April 29th meeting and spoke in executive session.
That wasn't a full presentation.
Because it was a presentation, and it was questions about, you know, the hidden money. But if you still, I'm not, I'm not trying to fight with anybody, if you want that auditor to come back, he can, because he's the one who did the 2324 report.
Yeah, and I, I remember, I remember being at one of them, and it was more involved, other than, you know, 15, 20 minutes.
We have to follow the process. The process is, there's an exit interview for the audit, and that hasn't happened yet. I feel like that needs to happen. So yes, I would like Bowman to come and address the very serious findings that they had in their report before moving forward with anything like this, for me personally.
I agree.
You have to help me.
Before we move on. People are going, there's serious findings.
Let him finish.
We switched financial systems last year. Typically, you have findings, and it's, it's financial system. Have we, we can talk to the auditor about that.
You understand?
Dave, that picture, be careful to cut picture, depending on the finance of what the auditor's got, so move it in and out.
Well, I'm not putting words in anyone's mouth. Let me just explain for the, for the public how this works. You have an auditor. The auditor comes in, they're, they work, they literally work in here. They, they live here in a room, and they're making sure we're compliant with everything as the year goes on. At a certain point in the year, usually in January, the business committee would have a meeting with that auditor to go over the audit report for the year, because we're starting the budget, we need to know what the finances are. That never happened. You've heard us for months asking for that, and that never happened. The auditor did come in, I think in April, and went over findings that were in the report. Well, you can't ignore the findings, and so that's, none of them have been addressed, is what I'm saying. So that, to me, is concerning, that, that's all I'm saying. And, and the only conversation we've had about auditing or an auditor is, let's go to a new auditor.
Just to chime in real quick, I think it was addressed several times. It was addressed in that executive session. It was addressed, and to say it was very serious findings, what Scott said, for those that couldn't hear, is that I think we have to be careful saying very serious findings when we switch financial systems. There was reasons why, and it was asked over and over again, specific questions, and it was answered. So I think to your point, if you want to have an exit interview, I don't think that's out of bounds, but I don't think it.
It's actually a fire.
Okay. So I'm just saying, it's not out of bounds to do that, certainly. Let's do an exit interview, but I think that it shouldn't prevent us from moving forward from voting tonight.
Yeah, I agree.
Report out on student activities?
Sure.
Can I ask one more question of business, not about that? Janine, we did away with, who was the person that was in charge of all the grounds and with the buildings and grounds? We have two people now doing that. I don't know if it's my right to ask, but are, are you checking up with them? Like, does the business committee check up with them? Because I really think we need to keep track of how it's going, now that we don't have that person.
I can speak to that. I can speak to that. So we have two operations managers who I've invited to the superintendent's cabinet. They come every Tuesday. They give feedback. Today, actually, I met with one of them to give me weekly updates as to how the buildings are proceeding to prepare for students and staff in, when they come back to school. More long-term projects, we've invited them to the energy. When the energy folks came to talk about the plans for solar, yes, it's, it's a lot. They're both taking on a lot more, but so is the entire department. But I'm, I have to say, I'm quite proud of both of them, because they come prepared with the agenda, they highlight items that are problematic for them, and obviously, on the daily, you have things that crop up. They've been working around summer programming for kids, our custodial staff, maintenance and grounds are working hard to make sure that, that we are ready. The short answer is, they provide us weekly updates, the entire cabinet, but probably provide me with daily updates, so.
That's good to hear, thank you.
And that, in the same vein, are those the two individuals that are in charge of these big projects we have, like the solar project, the, all the energy audit? Are those the two individuals as well?
They are, they are. Well, one is, one is coming to, came to the meetings to provide input as to items that would be priority items for the receipt.
input as to items that would be priority items for the receipt of the, the projects, yeah, is the best way to frame it.
So they're in charge of the energy audit as well?
Um, I, I think Janine's really been jumping in and taking a lead on a lot of this. They've been reporting to both of us. So as far as the individual who's no longer working for us, yes, both of them have assumed a lot of that responsibility. And Janine, yeah?
And that, the same updates that they give you, is there any way you can condense those, put them in a report and have one of those individuals sit here during a public meeting and do a buildings and grounds report out for the public on capital projects, things that have been going on, any concerns that parents have brought to us about leaks, inclement weather damage, et cetera?
I think, I think what I could do for the board would be to provide this information. We actually just had this conversation in the last cabinet meeting and today I spoke to one of the gentlemen and, and shared that, because I do a weekly confidential, that's really detailed for the board, we're going to add a building and ground section where they can give me updates to share out with the board. And certainly if, if somebody wants to touch on something like that, or if you want me to summarize at a board meeting, I don't have a problem with that. They're quite busy and so bringing them to, for the larger projects in terms of capital projects, I have no problem sharing that with the board on their behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, the student activities communication committee met on July 8th. It was sort of a tag along meeting, it was rather short, we were in training that day. Present at that meeting was myself and Mrs. Bloom. The administration was Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Distillio, and Mr. Sweeney. Mrs. Gerber discussed the agenda items that involve the sports schedule, the athletic calendar policies such as student, I mean, school security program, student participation fee, code of conduct, and student attendance. Mr. Distillio talked about an idea that he has, it's in, very much in the infancy stage where he was looking at seniors and targeting their interests where he might be able to kind of hook them up with, um, an individual to more or less be an intern. Like, an example would be if there's a student that's interested in business and technology, websites, maybe hook that, that student up with some business and it would have like, kind of be like an internship. There's a lot more information that will follow, but it's, part of it is to kind of, to take a look at our seniors who, who have enough credits, when I think it was over 250 students that would leave our school about 10:30 in the afternoon, not participating in a lot of the elective classes. And this way, we would maybe try to give them encouragement in the things that they like where they can actually go out into the field. So it's just, there's a lot more to be thought about with this concept, but it is something that he's looking at. And that's it.
Mrs. Baker, just have one update. Mrs. Gerber, who is not here this evening, is probably watching us on TV, so hello, Mrs. Gerber, you're supposed to be relaxing, which I know you're not, she just emailed me. The answer to your question, gotta love Gretchen, the answer to your question about the NHS price line is $6,000. That's what she told me.
$6,000 for the three schools?
That's, she just shared with me, NHS, tell, tell Mrs. Baker that the NHS pricing is $6,000.
Yeah, let, let Mrs. Gerber know of this, so thank you, I will email her for a breakdown.
Can give her a wave, I think she's watching.
I'll email her for a breakdown. I know, I know what they're involved, involving here is the, the teacher stipend.
Yes.
Okay, but I want to know how much the NHS charges.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to open to the public?
No, I have something on old business. I have something on old business.
Um, we didn't get there yet.
Aren't we on old business? Open to the public.
Oh, actually, they put committee reports under old business, so yeah, sorry about that, you can.
Okay, last meeting, our last meeting, I made a motion and I withdrew it. And Mrs. Wector had pointed out that about, looking at Strauss ESME and, and the policy that Steve more or less brought up a few minutes ago. So I'm going to make a motion now, I'm going to make a motion that we look at policy 0176 and that under numeral, number three, number one, we keep the first sentence and strike the rest.
I'll second that.
Say it again, repeat what we're striking and what we're doing.
Okay, under policy 0176, Roman numeral three, number one, keep the first sentence and strike the rest of that paragraph. Didn't we have a, an attachment of this, did we have an attachment of this to look at on this agenda? I think we had one that compared the two, or am I wrong?
Did that in my confidential.
Okay, yeah, maybe that'd be easier if people look at that.
If you look up the current, if you look up the current policy, you'll at least be able to see what, what the.
Do we have a?
I could, I could read it, if it would help the rest of the board members.
Do we still have a policy committee that meets?
Trying to pull it up, ask them, it's not coming up.
Do we have a policy committee that meets?
Yeah, but I, I want to know why it's not coming up. Okay, number, I got it, I got it.
We don't have a policy committee anymore?
Okay, Roman numeral three, number one, keep, the board will hire an attorney to represent its interest in all the collective negotiation agreements with the association. That remains. Strike, due to the board solicitor's role in advocating for the board and individual of school district employees in various circumstances, example, student discipline hearings, special education litigation, the board solicitor shall not serve as an attorney representing the board in collective bargaining. I think that that's the point that was brought out, that this language was created by the board in the last round of negotiations. We did not adhere to that, it's an outdated policy and I'm putting up for a motion, it's on the floor.
Yeah, 2019 is when it was updated, a long time ago.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Steve seconded it.
Okay, discussion?
I thought Steve first seconded it.
They did.
Okay, so we can have discussion now? Is there any discussion?
I have one thing to say.
Go ahead, Scott.
Try to talk slowly so you can hopefully understand me. Why wouldn't we do this with a first and second reading like we normally do? Because that would be my preference, that we put forth the policy, objective modification that Connie's making, do it as a first reading and then a second reading, so that'd be my suggestion.
Solicitor, have any opinion on that?
I mean, I, I agree, I can name about five policies right off the top of my head that I'd like to strike and change. I think we should just do a first and second reading, if that's the will of the board. If not, some policies, we're doing a first and second reading, others we're just suspending, now we're striking through. I just think, or have a policy committee that we actually put these into a committee to discuss it. Like, we just, I feel like haphazardly, just do whatever we want with policies when it suits what we want. I'm not saying that's the case here, but, I mean, at least can we have a process?
So I think we're bound by policy to go through a first read and a second read, so I think we still have to go through.
We didn't do that on several policies that Scott introduced.
Because we spend things.
Well.
This came up for a couple of months, we've been discussing his policy.
So are you bringing it up for a first read, Connie?
No, I'm bringing it up, I'm bringing it up to the board. I have a motion on the floor to vote.
So the board policy, this issue is governed by board policy, so there's discretion as to how to handle it in terms of whether or not policies do require a first and second reading. Your board policy, 0131, provides in part, the proposed draft bylaw policy regulation approved by the board on first reading will be submitted for adoption at a succeeding meeting of the board. Revisions in the draft may be made at any meeting prior to adoption by a simple majority vote of the board. So, and, and it also suggests that new policies or revisions should be submitted to the superintendent before the board votes on it. So my recommendation would be that you vote on your motion, consider it a first reading of the, of the revision, and then also vote on, on it again at the next meeting, assuming it passes this time.
Okay.
And that would be the second.
I'm fine with that. Okay, so she's revising her motion to strike that, well, does she need to say it's as a first reading or, okay, so, okay. Any other discussion?
That will give everybody a chance to look at that thing that I was talking about, where we compare the two.
Okay. Roll call.
So just to make sure, yes would be, you're going along with my motion, no, you're not.
Right. This is serving as first reading?
So in another, I'm sorry, just, a yes vote would be that they support having it on for a second reading next time. So they can still, anyone can still vote yes today and vote no at the next meeting. This is simply to move it on to the next meeting.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it, it's what I said though, the first, yeah, okay, first sentence, strike the rest.
I'm fine with that because we discussed this policy and that exact change in business committee a couple of times.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, roll call. Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
No.
Mrs. Hartong?
No.
Mr. La Liberty?
No.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Motion carries. So we'll see that for second reading next week, next meeting. Scott, did you have something for old business?
Yes, I did. I would like to make a motion to bring Dr. Hibbs back, I suppose, will you?
Okay. Is there a second? He's making a motion to bring Dr. Hibbs back. Elaine is seconding, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
No.
Mrs. Baker?
No.
Mrs. Bloom?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Abstain.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
No.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Abstain.
Motion failed. Any other items for old business?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Janine, the name, the naming rights for the PAC, are we going to go through that RFP next month in committee?
That's on August business.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, maybe, I, I do have something on old business as well. We need to take a look at the minutes of 420, of, I'm sorry, yeah, 429, and look at amending those minutes to reflect exactly what happened.
Do you have a motion or anything? Or proposed amend, amendment?
Are you amending 429? Discuss that in executive?
Okay, all right, so that's not really old business?
Well.
That's fine, we'll just discuss it.
I, I brought it up as old business because we already passed the minutes and the minutes don't reflect, they're not accurate.
That's fine.
Why are we approving minutes then?
I was just going to say. Listen, it's fine, we'll talk about it, but read the minutes. If you don't agree with the minutes, we shouldn't approve the minutes, or you should say no to the minutes and your objection. Now, after the fact, we're going to go back and amend minutes that we voted on.
Carol, I couldn't agree with you more. This is the third time and I probably need to really look at this stuff with a fine tooth thrown. It's the third time the minutes were not accurate. You're right, I missed it. You're, you're right.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
Second, Ralph, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to call up Callie and tell you, Callie, that, I don't have my glasses, so I can't see anyone past like this purple shirt person in the second row, so sorry, I can't, that's you, right. And also Lori has something for you in the back here.
What's a walk-up song?
I think everybody should have one.
I'll probably do better without the mic, so if I'm not being loud enough with the mic, just tell me and I'll project.
Okay.
Good evening to the members of the Board of Education, Administration, and Washington Township as a whole. My name is Callie and I'm entering my junior year at Township. Many of you know me as the most recent student board representative, but three months ago, I also received notice of my appointment to serve as the president of Future Business Leaders of America or FBLA for this upcoming school year. This organization is one of the multiple that I am involved in that have truly changed my life and are now at risk. Five years ago, I had no clue what I wanted to do with my future, but then I joined FBLA and discovered my love for the business world. I now hope to attend the United States Air Force Academy to study business management and cellular and molecular biology. Three years ago, I proudly walked across the national stage in Chicago, representing New Jersey as a seventh grader in front of 14,000 people. Two years ago, I finished my term as the state chair from middle level FBLA New Jersey alongside two Bunker Hill Middle School members who served on the state committee with me. In eighth grade, Bunker Hill Middle School FBLA found itself without an advisor. FBLA meant so much to me then, so I ran the middle school's FBLA program without an advisor for a good portion of the year. There are multiple people in this room who watched me do that and volunteered their time to help me keep the organization alive. That year, Bunker Hill Middle School brought more members to states than had ever been brought before, expanded the club for the next year, and was able to raise money for Alex's Lemonade Stand in honor and memory of Cole Fitzgerald and Dante Terebrelli with a community service project that placed sixth in the nation. I say this to you not to boost my ego or to impress you, but to prove that there are so many people that will volunteer their time and fight for FBLA. Funnily enough, about four years ago, I stood in this very spot advocating for the funding of FBLA the first time, the only difference being that I was nervous and shaky. Today, I stand here confident and composed and I fully credit FBLA for that transformation. Again, I don't say this to toot my own horn, but to show you that the real tangible impact this organization has had on my life and the lives of many students is worth it. A year ago, our all-female executive board was announced for the 2024-2025 school year. We earned our roles through applications, interviews, and dedication. Eight months ago, we sat at school watching our regional awards ceremony, listening to Washington Township be called again and again and again. Four months ago, we were able to bring 40 competitors to states in Atlantic City. This trip, by the way, was almost completely self-funded, down to the snacks in our suite. Again, I want to emphasize that this trip was almost completely self-funded. We paid for ourselves to attend, we bought our own t-shirts, and brought snacks to share with the other members. Washington Township was recognized as having the largest chapter membership in southern New Jersey. We earned a gold seal of merit and had multiple top 10 placements. Exactly a month ago, we sent competitors to nationals in Anaheim, California. And just about a month, the incoming executive board would have begun discussing our plans for the year. We would have visited every business class, graphic design class, journalism class, and others to promote FBLA. Again, apologies for the redundancy, students pay for their own state dues, national dues, chapter t-shirts, and more. The executive board would have started preparing for the New Jersey Consumer Bowl where we placed second in Gloucester County by a margin of five points last year. We were supposed to compete and battle the chapters for the first time at states this year. There's a bit of a running joke among FBLA members across the state. At awards ceremonies, you often hear the same schools being called multiple times, sometimes in the same event. We joke that once you see someone from Abskami or Piscataway competing in your event, you know you didn't place because that's just how good they are. As silly as it is, Washington Township FBLA had the potential to become one of those schools. We gained new members, received new awards, and produced more qualifiers each year. FBLA often operates in the background without much publicity, but for me and others, it was everything. I spent the last five years of my life devoting so much time to this organization and I plan to stay involved through college. Despite all this progress and recognition, we were recently informed that FBLA will not receive funding for the district for this upcoming school year. Having had the privilege of being the student board representative, I have a unique understanding of the fact that sometimes nothing can be done, which is a difficult reality, so I apologize for pursuing a loss clause with the budget cuts. However, I'm a firm believer in using the voice that I was given, even if just to share positives instead of asking for a solution that sometimes doesn't exist. If I accomplish nothing else today, I am glad that I was able to provide insight as to what FBLA has done for students. As others have said while advocating for golf, gymnastics, screen club, and more, we understand the why, but we ask that you understand the impact. Right now, I'm taking financial literacy. Right now, I'm taking financial literacy, along with most of the upcoming juniors at Township. One of our recent assignments highlighted the value of Career and Technical Student Organizations, or CTSOs, in preparing for the future. FBLA is the largest CTSO in the country, with over a quarter of a million members globally. So imagine how frustrating, even insulting, it is to be taught the benefits of an organization like FBLA, only to learn that funding was cut less than two weeks later. You cannot expect students to prioritize career planning when a decision like this is made in the same breath. The seventh goal of Future Business Leaders of America is as follows: to encourage scholarship and promote school loyalty. This district asks students to represent their school with loyalty and pride, but when programs like FBLA, programs that inspire and prepare, are left behind, what message are you really sending? FBLA gave me and so many others a voice, a path, and a purpose. Now I'm using mine not to argue or demand, as I understand the thought process behind these decisions, but to remind you that this program matters. It shapes future teachers, professors, and superintendents. It prepares future Marines, engineers, and public servants. It nurtures the future of our society. The board's own belief states excellence is achievable and always worth the investment. I and so many others are begging you to show the students of the district that you serve that you believe they are worth the investment. Don't let this be the end of the story, because FBLA is still writing future leaders. We just need to keep turning the page. Thank you.
Thank you, Callie. I'm going to call Emily up before we respond, because I can see you have the same topic. Emily McCray?
Hi, my name is Emily McCray. I'm also entering my junior year at the high school. Yesterday around noon, I received the parent square notification about FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, and its future at our school. Or, rather, its lack of a future, because it was decided last Friday that FBLA will no longer be offered at the high school. It's become glaringly obvious with each round of budget cuts that when money gets tight, our futures are the first thing to go. The successive-driven, motivated students seem all too easily disposable in the eyes of the board. The decision to cut FBLA contradicts the New Jersey Learning Standards, the district's mission, and the board's mission and beliefs that can be found on the Township website. FBLA is a business-oriented club, yes, but it's also so much more than that. It offers students the chance to participate in regional, state, and national competitions in over 70 categories, covering a wide range of topics, not just in business, but in many areas that allow them to explore future career paths. These competitions build real-world skills that prepare us for life beyond high school. You'd think that these would be the kind of opportunities that the district would prioritize, especially since New Jersey Learning Standard 9.2 outlines career awareness, exploration, preparation, and training. The standard emphasizes just how critical it is for students to be knowledgeable about their interests and talents, and to be well-informed about career options, planning, and requirements. By cutting FBLA, we are using, we are losing one of the best platforms available to help students explore their interests, enhance their skills, and gain insight into the careers they might want to pursue. Standard 9.4, Life Literacies and Key Skills, stresses the importance of global and cultural awareness, financial and technological literacy, and critical thinking. Through topics FBLA offers such as international business and business ethics, students learn how to navigate through a constantly-changing network of information and are taught to present professional solutions to ethical dilemmas. In a world that is becoming more technologically advanced daily, these are essential skills. FBLA provides students with the chance to develop skills that can't be gained in the traditional classroom setting. These skills are leadership, public speaking, and networking, which are all essential for success in any field. And yet, this club, which serves as a crucial outlet for so many students, is the one that ends up on the chopping block. The mission of the Washington Township Public Schools states that the district aims to provide a safe, positive, and progressive environment, but how can that mission be upheld if we are actively regressing? How can you claim to be creating an environment that fosters growth and prepares students for the future if you are stripping away experiences that allow us to thrive? The board claims to believe in excellence through equity, engagement, and environment, but I have to ask, where is the equity in cutting opportunities from students who can't access this program anywhere else? How can we engage when not a single student was involved in deciding to cut the club? What are we supposed to do when our environment doesn't want to see us succeed? How can you say that excellence is achievable and always worth the investment in one breath, and then refuse to invest in our futures in the next? And if you don't act in accordance with what you claim to be your mission, then all you have is a list of empty promises and buzzwords sitting on a webpage. In the 2024-2025 school year, Township FBLA had more members than ever before. We also had eight national qualifiers. We were growing, we had momentum, and we had plans, and now we have nothing. Not even an explanation beyond budget cuts were made. By taking away FBLA, you are not just removing a club, you're removing the line on the college application that says "national qualifier." You're removing a first-place trophy from a student shelf, and you're removing a future business leader before they even have the chance to leave, to lead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This is the first I'm hearing of any of this.
Julie, I was going to say that. We don't make these cuts.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like that comes to us, the board says, "Strike this and strike that." It doesn't even get to our level.
I mean, all I can say is we're going to look into this and any other clubs or activities that have been cut. I don't know why they were cut. We were not, I was not under the impression anything was being cut at the high school. So, thank you for coming out and speaking about that and explaining that. Dana Zillier, I should know how to pronounce your last name. It's been awhile. Zeiler?
Zillier.
Zillier, I got it right first time.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Dana Zillier, and I'm a resident of Washington Township. Some of what I say is going to repeat what Callie and Emily had to say, but from a parent perspective. I have a rising sophomore this year, and he was involved in FBLA. He's interested in business, but because he wasn't enrolled in a business class, DECA was not available to him. FBLA is open to everyone, whether they have the ability to take a business class or not. So those kids that are in the Vocal and Performing Arts Academy, the Culinary Academy, various other academies, or focusing on sciences and not business, are able to be in FBLA, which I think is an important distinction. Additionally, as a freshman, he wasn't entirely ready to present something without having taken a business class. FBLA, unlike DECA, offers opportunities for kids to test and qualify, and he actually qualified to go to regionals and to go to nationals this year as a freshman. It was an amazing opportunity for him to see all these other students that were as invested as he is this early. Additionally, I wanted to highlight the fact that FBLA has a broader range than DECA. My understanding is DECA is mostly focused on marketing, sales, and business strategy, which is all great. However, FBLA includes accounting, computer science, cybersecurity, journalism, graphic design. And so these kids are able to participate even if they aren't strictly business-focused. I don't know who mentioned it. My understanding is that the FBLA has been here at the high school for three years. Their first year, they had 65 kids. They then had 89 paid members, and this year, according to Mr. De Laurentis, they had 120 paid members. Those are kids that decided to pay dues, 120 kids. That's not insignificant. My question, and I'm not going to use all my time, and I understand the board just said they weren't aware of cuts. I found out, like Callie and Emily did, yesterday at noon, without any awareness, that clubs were being cut. I would like to know what clubs are being cut. I heard jazz band tossed around, which I know is very popular for a certain group of kids. What are we actually saving as a district by cutting these clubs? As we talked about, the FBLA kids pay dues, they buy their T-shirts, they actually do some community service-type things. I know my son could have gone to Target and helped with a special needs field trip. So it's not just these conferences either. I paid for Anaheim. I paid for Atlantic City. I think a lot of parents would be willing to do that for their kids to have an opportunity like this at the high school, and that's one of the things that makes our district, and how big it is, great. The fact that kids can find their niche, there are clubs and activities for most kids to be involved in if they want to be. So, my question is, what clubs are being cut? How can we find that out? How much are we actually saving with these clubs that are being cut? We're talking about huge budget deficit, but it seems like things are being nickelled and dimed, and is cutting FBLA or jazz band really going to make the difference when you see what it's doing to these kids? Who does make that decision? And then, what are the criteria when people are making these decisions as to what to cut and what not to cut? Thank you.
I'm going to try to answer some of it to the best of my capabilities, so I apologize because I'm, you know, I'm jumping in on a lot of things that I was partially in conversation with during the past months, and some things not as, not as involved, but knowledgeable. I will tell you, I just actually met with Mr. Anderson to talk about clubs. You talked about a monetary recruitment of, you know, clubs, I believe, and Janine, you'll have to help me here, but I just pulled up some information, I believe, in some, like when there was a final cut, and that's really, it's not about what kids are, what we're spending for kids, it's more related to stipends, I believe, like for people to run the clubs, to oversee the clubs. I believe the process was that recommendations were made and discussed with administration, both centrally and at the building level. The answer, the question was what clubs are running. Mr. Anderson's aware of what clubs are running. I believe he's reached out to staff to let them know to apply for oversight of some of those clubs. Some of those clubs that were selected were because they did not have somebody to facilitate or oversee those clubs. If I recall that conversation, I think the grant sum was somewhere in like the $60,000 range, I believe, of recruitment of 78? Okay, I couldn't remember. So it was a considerable amount of money. I do want to say this, I'm a firm believer that obviously education is, has an impact on kids far beyond the academic arena, and so I agree that students have to be involved and need to be involved to be part of school. And they grow because of those things. We offer quite a few activities. Obviously, not all of those things are selected to run. I can't speak specifically about all of the things that are running or not running. The building leaders definitely have that information. So, you know, as far as the decision-makers, I guess you could say, yes, the board does vote, but administration works together to, to make those final decisions. In fact, this week, I was part of conversations regarding clubs involving special education. So I was able to make sure that some of the clubs that are very specialized for students I have, who really participate in those things and may not, those things may not be available for whatever reason to some of those students, I made sure those clubs are running, just like we have other clubs that are running. And I'm looking at Mr. Anderson because he knows we've had a number of conversations about this, because we both are very passionate about kids participating. Outside of that, you know, there are so many things that have been impacted by the budget. It's staffing, it's programs, it's services, it's facilities, it's, you know, administration, it's teachers, it's, you know, related services, so many things. And so, we're trying to push back things that, to try to offset some of these cuts. None of this is easy. I respect the young ladies who came to the podium, by the way, did a beautiful job speaking. And you shared really what I think extracurricular activities are all about, as well as rounding our students out to be the adults that we want to be able, them to be, and to have good careers, and really give back to their community. Outside of that, you know, I know we had a few questions, I'm hoping I answered some of those.
I think, I think if you answered.
You can't put it all back.
You answered about the $78,000, but also, can we get a list of what clubs are being, can we get a list?
Absolutely, the board can. And we are still kind of in process of that. We're still, as, as, today, I actually worked with Mr. Anderson on a high school club. But this is globally, this is, you know, we have activities, extracurricular activities that are spanning through all of our grades. So, some things we're offering during the school day, but outside of the school day, you need facilitators, you need people to oversee them.
I have a question. And I wasn't going to say anything, but since it's here, as a mother of a daughter who's in the drama club, which we lost an advisor, which was, she's very much needed, but whatever. What's, what was cut from sports? Because theater is my daughter's sport. That is what she does. So what did you cut, or what was cut from our sports programs? Like, our football coaches who get a lot of money for stipends. I mean, it was enough to, some of them get paid enough to save every club that was cut.
Well, if you remember, as part of the budget that the board voted on, pay to participate was involved for athletics.
But like, something like drama is almost completely self-funded. And FBLA, so how could we cut something that you're already giving so little to, and yet our sports keep getting funded more and more? And I'm saying this as a, as a parent, but also as a board member. I mean, I, I don't want to vote no for something that would, or I don't want to vote yes for something that would take away something for some kids that can't play a sport, don't play a sport. Or to take something like FBLA, or drama, or something with the marching band, that these kids don't have another outlet, some of them. And they're safest within their specialized club. Like, you don't, you don't realize how much a kid needs that specialized club until it's your kid.
Understood, absolutely.
And if you take that away, where are you leaving them? They're not going to want to come to, to school. They're not going to love school. My daughter loved school this year because of the drama department. And I have had many conversations with Mr. Anderson that if it wasn't for the drama department, I would have pulled my daughter out and sent her somewhere else. Like, these are things we have to consider. The VPA, they were tasked with creating this, this beautiful program, and they did it amazingly. And now you're telling them they have to do more with less when they've exceeded your expectations. I just, I feel like they're being hurt for doing a fantastic job. I mean, they won multiple awards. And I just, I don't understand how taking money from these very little specialized clubs, but not touching our sports program is fair and equitable.
If I can just like add to what you're saying, like, with sports, we got a heads-up months ago. So I guess the question is, because I don't think Annette, or Mr. Anderson, or anybody wants to cut this stuff. I mean, they're all educators, they know the value. So at what point did someone say to the high school, "Cut $80,000 in clubs"? Like, when did that come up in the budget process, is my question? Because sports, we, we heard about it, but this, we're just hearing about this now. So, when, yeah, when was that, like, what's the process, I guess, for that?
So that was part of the budget process, it was included in the, in the, all the budget presentations.
I never saw anything about clubs being cut.
They don't, they don't specifically say what cuts. They give them X amount of dollars to, to cut from their budget.
Do you remember seeing that anywhere?
No, no, we don't see it, because it doesn't come to this level. That's why I tried to tell the young lady here.
Janine just said that it was in the budget that clubs were getting cut. I don't ever remember seeing that line, I don't.
Does that have to do with the line-by-line that we don't go over as a group?
The only thing that I heard was that at the elementary level, they were cutting everything but drama and safety, safety. They, they, they had various clubs. And I think something that we need, we need to understand in Washington Township, we have such a big high school, and I agree with Mrs. Hartong that, that for some kids, that's their little niche in the school, okay? You go to a smaller school, it's a different story, but when you're, when you're in with 2,000 kids, that's where you find your, your home base, is your club, or what other people you have in common with, with. That being said, I have a question, just clarification. Do we have two people getting a stipend in drama, or one person? There was a drama stipend of $8,000. Are we paying two people $8,000?
No.
It's split, half-year.
It's split.
It's split.
So it's $4,000 and $4,000?
I believe, I don't, Mr.?
Yeah.
No.
Is it 8,000? The administration might know.
What is it?
Mrs. Miller. Because my, here's, here's why I'm bringing this up. Because my, here's, here's why I'm bringing this up. There was always one person. We had an issue two years ago, and as a result of it, the, where there were, where a person was going to be let go, that's been here for many years in drama, and a new person coming in was going to get the stipend, and the way we resolved that is for that year, we allowed two people to have $8,000, $8,000 stipend. My question is, have we continued with that, or have we gone back to what we always had, one person with $8,000?
I, I have to get that information for you, Connie, I don't, I don't have that right in my disposal.
Ray's saying one.
What happens is, many times there's a stipend, and at times, staff members split that stipend.
Oh, I understand it, that's fine.
I don't have that information.
I don't, I don't have, I, I understand that, if you have an $8,000 stipend, you have two people working, they get paid four and four, but I'm just wondering if we, we made that special, that special change, because we had, it was summertime, the whole room was-
Yeah, we, I remember what you're talking about, and I think we just need to check and see, did both those people still get stipends?
I'd appreciate getting that information.
What was the club organizer?
It was the dram, was the, what's it called, Linda, you probably know, the drama advisor?
Quite a few, I just-
The head drama advisor.
There's drama assistant, there's drama publicity, there's engineering design, there's-
Or not.
Yeah, but she's right, we did, that was like a stopgap measure that year, and it shouldn't, it wasn't supposed to continue, but I just think overall, like, this, we need a better system, we need a better process for this. I, I don't, I know, I would have said something, just from a personal selfish standpoint, I have a freshman, if clubs were being cut, like, you know what I mean? So I, I don't, as a parent, I would have been upset about that. So, not even a board member.
Equity.
Yeah.
It's the equity.
Where's the equity?
Which one? Like I said, my, my kid's sport is theater, so now you're taking away her sport, or not taking it away, but you're diminishing her sport, when no one else's sport was diminished.
What we can do is, what I can do, is bring to you the list of things that are running, things that were proposed and cut, we could talk about that in business, or student activities. Actually, student activities, but I can bring it to each committee, I've done that.
Or you can sit in.
It doesn't, it's not going to obviously change or offset, I mean, we had a devastating blow to our budget this year, it was devastating.
Why not cut a sports coach stipend?
Well, we could have, but we didn't even know about this.
Right, so like, now it's being presented to us after the fact.
I would have, I can't speak to that, I'd have to go back and look at what was presented.
I would have never voted yes, in fact, I don't think I did, on any of the sports stipends, knowing that this was going to happen as a result.
Well, and you wouldn't even know what was cut, because you would just get the co-curricular, and you wouldn't know what was missing.
Just the total was here. Like, that's just, it does, it just doesn't stick.
And you're going to find that when I, when we show there are quite a few things that are running, but obviously, some of these things that are, are not running, I will say, I, I met with Mr. Anderson, they were not, some of the decisions were based on attendance, I'm not saying it's, you know, the, the clubs that were shared receiving, but some clubs aren't running because they don't have somebody to oversee those clubs, or there weren't, you know, when you look at the attendance for kids who are participating, it was a very, very low number of students, so sometimes you have to make those difficult decisions with administration.
Now, mind you, drama is not cut, it's not purely cut.
No, there's quite a few stipends for that.
But we did lose a stipend for a position that, that that person takes care of everything that would be deemed under the drama club versus a student that's in the VPAs.
Okay.
But let's, let's move.
Okay.
Yep.
Randy Ford?
Randy Ford, Washington Township, just two items. On the policy discussion around 0176, you may just want to consider running that through Conflict Council to get the board solicitor, whose firm sits in both roles. The change being made is to allow that firm to sit in both collective bargaining and as board solicitor, so just from a rules of professional conduct, and an attorney, and all that kind of good stuff, potentially self-serving, so you might want to run that through Conflict Council before the second reading. The other item is, agenda item N6 is the bill list, and on the bill list, there are fees from lawyers who represent the board in an action that I brought against the board back in May, when I alleged that the board violated the Open Public Meetings Act, and it's an invocation of the doctrine of necessity. I just want to, I alerted the board at that time that that action was, was taken, I just wanted to alert the board and make sure you're being briefed by your attorneys. An order should be placed by the judge shortly. There was a hearing on Monday where board counsel was there, I guess from the insurance company, but the judge did find that this board violated the Open Public Meetings Act in that invocation, and took action in private instead of in public. So, to the extent the board hasn't been briefed, I want to make you aware of that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Tom Baudesaro?
So Randy just mentioned, uh, policy 0176, I'm sorry, Connie's not here. Whenever my board ever wanted to change a policy, they would bring research. They would say, here's why. She calls it outdated, that's a complete and utter misstatement. It's best practice, your current policy is 100% best practice. I sent to every board member research at probably at least three different sites, and then I asked Ms. Baker in that email, if, if you can show me where it's outdated, I would love to see it, I'll correct myself. Ms. Giselle, one of the things you said was, we need to do a better job of consensus, and we've not done that, and these five to four votes, just bringing it, trying to bring it up and shove it down the board members' throats today was wrong. I will ask every board member here to start doing the right thing, do the right thing for the right reason. The policy we have right now is exactly perfect, it's best practice. Do not put policies in because, I like this guy, I want to give him more money, I want to give him a job. That's not what you're here for. You're here for, to set an example for our kids. Every policy, we should desire to be best practice, am I right? Should it be best practice? So challenge the person that wants to change it, to show why is it best practice? Don't take words, it's outdated, nah, that's wrong. So please, everybody, starting with the president, work to bring consensus, let's get more 9-0 votes and less 5-4 votes, because that's what we've had too much of. Also, I want to talk about the RFP, I think can help really simple change, I've never heard so much discussion around an auditor before. One of the changes I would recommend, when I would do it, I would send a list of people who we were going to include in the RFP to all board members, before I sent it out. They can go through, do their research, determine that the companies are good, you said you'd never heard of a company, Mr. Ross. So you can go through and do it, and then once you agree that we have companies that are credible, that can do the job, then it makes very perfect sense to take the best price. But you take all of that out of the equation, when you do that ahead of time, because we should be looking to save every bit of money, but if the company, whoever it is, I didn't hear who it was, or who won, if they're reputable, and they're, you know, you can, you can go out and research every company out there, it's all out there, if they're reputable, we should be looking to say, we, we've talked about all the money we can here. But just change that process a little bit, Janine, give them the companies that you want to use, and let them question them beforehand, and that way, if you have four companies that are bidding, everybody knows their quality, low price wins, real simple, makes it much easier, saves you a big headache, so. But again, please, policy 0176, make it make sense, don't just let somebody jam it down the throat. Ms. Baker, I hope you go back and watch what I said, because what you did was wrong, I've sent you the research on it, you keep saying it's outdated, I've asked, I would love to see your research that shows it's outdated, because it's best practice.
Thank you. Brandy Williams?
Can I just, can I just say one thing about-
Go ahead.
Um, I just, I just wanted to share the process that we do, not that I wouldn't take any advice that I could to improve the process, but, um, once we decide we're going out for RFP, what our purchasing department does is they keep an ongoing list of any vendor in the past who's expressed interest in doing business with us, or any company that we know of, or we've heard of in the field, that do business with local schools, or, you know, anybody that was recommended, and we send, we mail them a copy of the RFP, so they're aware of it. We're also required to advertise in the newspaper when we have a bidding opportunity, or any bidding opportunity or RFP, and we advertise it on our website, so we always, um, on, on our sheet that you'll see on the agenda, the purchasing department will list who we sent an RFP out, a lot of times, people will ask them for us, and then one of the things that we do, that I mentioned earlier, is once we open the proposals, we bring them to a business committee meeting, and each proposal that we receive is part of the business committee agenda, so not only can business committee members see it, but any board member can review the proposals in case there's questions about qualifications, or, or anything that they might see in the proposal. But thank you for the suggestions, appreciate it. Good evening. I want to go back to the policy of the 176, I want to dumb this down, because my head is hurting, it's like a ping-pong game here, like, I, honestly, it's very hard to follow yous, it's a lot of, I don't know, I don't know. All right, with the 1, 0, the 0176 policy, that is all brought up because of the Ari situation, correct? This is all an issue because he was the negotiator and the solicitor, but then you guys want to suspend this policy or get rid of it, to allow him to be both roles, and then you're going to ask the council, aren't they going to be biased? How can you get a, a good legal advice from the person that violated the policy? For the five people that voted yes, why do you want to suspend it, or get rid of it? What's the objective there? I'd like more information about that. What is the plan, the ulterior motive? Another thing, you guys say, about these cuts, I don't know, who knows? Why, is it Annette? Are you the one that cut it and didn't tell the board? Was it Anderson? Is he, are they making cuts and not telling anybody? So they just went in and cut a bunch of stuff, and nobody on this board knows, but your main job is the budget, correct? So I'd like to know is, who approved it? Or you just had people going rogue, they just can cut whatever they want? Definitely need an explanation, and why, I don't know if it's something, is it something being slipped in there? Because all of you said, oh, we didn't get a list of what was being cut, so somebody's just being sneaky, and just cutting whatever they want, we're just allowing people to do whatever they want? About the theater, when I spoke to the economics development over at the municipal building, she was saying how she's contacted the theater person that's in charge to host more live events, to bring in money, which would help the township, help the school, but the person never gets back to her. Why isn't that ever, like, addressed? Why don't you guys ever go after seeking out how to bring in money? Why is it just cut? Let's cut, 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 cut. Has anybody done any footwork to get money to come in? Because there seems an opportunity. You could host Circus LA, and then the people can go to the restaurants, and it's a win-win for the school and the township. Why hasn't anybody thought of this? Then I want to go back to the auditing, the findings. I saw a few months ago these findings. Did any of you look at the auditing findings? Did you thoroughly look at it, and did you address anyone, what Janine? Why is it that, oh, I don't know, I don't, I don't know anything? We literally, tonight, it's been, I don't know, I don't know, I never heard of that, I didn't know this, where did this happen? How is this possible? What do you guys do? It's frustrating, and my head hurts, I sit here and it's a ping-pong game. I have no idea half the time what you're talking about, because you're just over there bickering, turning into something, gaslighting, it's obnoxious, there's no answers. So to the auditing, the findings, none of yous went through it, I guess, and you guys have three different companies you want to go with? Are any of them self-serving? What were the scores on them? Is anybody friends with these companies? I'd like to know, why are you guys wanting to change companies because of the money? I need you to be more transparent. Thank you.
Julie?
Yes, real quick. For those that want to reference, I just took a second, the public hearing presentation of the budget that was given on April 29th, under budget cuts, it says, reduction in co-curriculars at all levels. So, this isn't the first, I didn't vote for the budget, for a variety of reasons that I stated in other meetings, I won't vote now, I won't say it now, but we, we were told about the reduction in co-curriculars. Were we told specifically? No. We weren't giving specific clubs, but it was on Janine's presentation of the budget. I just want to point that out.
Actually, I was just doing the same thing, I was going back to my presentation, so in committee as well, it wasn't just co-curricular, Janine actually broke it down at each level, at, at the, the dollars that were going to be reduced, so that, that was provided to the board.
At the high school?
At the high school was $78,000.
And which, which presentation was this?
That was a budget presentation in committees.
Oh, in committee, I mean, that's-
All the budget committees, but they were all, every, every single committee that had the same presentation.
Let me try and explain this, let me try and explain this, because you said you feel like you don't know what's going on.
That's the one I found, yeah.
Yeah. I think the first topic you brought up was the policy, so the po, the, what they're talking about, and this kind of goes to Tom's comment too, best practice is given to us from a company called Strauss Esme. Strauss Esme is like a national company that is like a clearinghouse for school policies, and so when major changes come down from the state or federal government, they get an alert, they change the policy, and we have to adopt the changed policy. So that's one way that you change policies, another way is if it comes up from the board, and we decide that we want to change a policy. So Strauss Esme's policy on, on lawyers doesn't have any of the, any of the stuff that's in our policy, basically. So for years, I was on the board for seven years, we had one lawyer, it was Kate Parton Skatcher, and our lawyer who sat up here was named Joe Bentley, and our lawyer who negotiated, his name was Rob Muselli, and we had Sunu, and a bunch of other lawyers from that firm that did everything. For some reason, and, and this is when you talk about, you know, underlying reasons why people do things, I don't know why, somebody has an issue, and someone came to the microphone and brought up that policy, and the fact that it was the same person, that it was Ari that was sitting here, and Ari doing the negotiating, I don't know if he does special ed, but, um, so that made us take a look at that policy, because for years, it was never an issue, and it had been the same attorney for like 10 years, prior to the board changing the attorney. So, we suspended the policy, which you kind of had to do that night, because we're in the middle of negotiations, and we were in the middle of a meeting, so that's been sitting there suspended, and we've been talking about it in committee for months, so I want to make that clear, that we've been talking about, what are we going to do with this, what are we going to do with this? And so, I did a look back with our old business administrator, and said, why did that policy change in the first place, to be written that way? And I've mentioned this at a meeting before, she said that the lawyer who was negotiate, the lawyer who was at the meet, Aaron, was like in the parking lot after a board meeting, and got physically assaulted by our employees, because they thought he was the one negotiating, and it was a different attorney. It was like a fluke weird situation, so they put that policy in. That's what she told me. And so, we just said, well, let's just take it out, and then in order, in an abundance of caution, we contacted Strauss Esme and said, what's your policy on, on solicitors? And they sent it to us, and it's literally like a page, it's so short, there's no, there's barely any information. So striking one item, I don't, I don't really see the big deal about that.
If you're talking like I'm a fourth grader, so with that policy, Ari violated the policy-
We can't, we can't go back and forth, I think you know the rule, and you're not a fourth grader, you're an adult, so I'm, I don't know how much more I can like make it base, like, I'm trying, well, I don't know what words I'm saying.
Ari violated, violated the policy, yes or no?
No, no, nothing has been violated, nothing's been violated, no, Ari didn't violate anything, and we can't go back and forth. Okay.
For the record, Ari violated it. So go to everybody at the [inaudible]. You did, you're lying.
I'm not lying, and you're screaming in the middle of a public meeting, so, I mean, and you're going back and forth, like, I don't know what's wrong. I'm trying to answer your questions, you just got up here and asked six questions. I am telling the truth, what is wrong?
Julie, just continue.
I don't, you know what?
Continue answering your questions.
I can't go back and forth, and I'm, I'm very much attempting to answer your questions, and something's wrong here. Go ahead, go ahead. It's just, something's, Nicole Anoudi.
It's just, Nicole Anoudi.
I originally came up here to ask one specific question, but after hearing these ladies speak, I was unclear until right now that FBLA was getting cut. So I would like to volunteer myself for whatever they need to keep the program running, if it's because of a stipend. I would take on that position to offer myself as a volunteer for them. If these things are being cut because of stipends, things should go out for qualified volunteers and for sponsors before any final decision to cut something is made. I spoke about this when I was talking about cutting middle school sports, and asked if you were able to get sponsors from the local business community to save a middle school sport. Everybody thought it was a good idea, and nobody followed through, and middle school sports were cut. I think if you put it out there for volunteers and sponsors for these things, you would be very surprised at the, what you would get to be able to help these kids. What it seems though, is that you are not exhausting all of your options before taking things away from our kids. In this position we're in, financially, you should be literally going through every single option until you're out of them, before you decide to take something away. I was a college professor for eight years at Temple. I have three small businesses, and I'm president of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm homegrown in my town. These kids for FBLA are our future. Most of the people who sit on our Board of Directors, and the 150 businesses we represent, majority of them are homegrown. They're from this town. A club like FBLA, you're investing into our future, and I would say, majority of it is for our own town. How could that be something that you take away? It can't be because of attendance. If you're taking away clubs because of attendance, that's not one. Who made that decision? I'm going to go out on a limb and say that a lot of our local business community would be in favor of being a part of FBLA. Last year, we had a meeting with our chamber, and DECA, and FBLA, on how we can, we can work together with them, because they are, one day, going to be us, in this town. So, my original question, which now turned into two parts, was regarding jobs and positions. Who makes the actual decision on what departments lose what number of jobs, and who those specific people are? There's been a lot of pointing fingers of whose job that was, superintendent, board, admin, whatever. Who is this specific person that puts pen to paper, and makes the list, and says, "This department is going to lose this many jobs, and this department's going to lose that many jobs, and these jobs are going to be these people"? And also, now that we're talking about programs and clubs, who makes those decisions? I'm, baffled isn't even the word, that I didn't know that was happening, came out of anybody's mouth. We all watched the presentation, that clubs and programs were going to be cut, and a dollar figure attached to it. If $80,000 of clubs and programs are going to be cut, why are you surprised that programs are cut? If it was FBLA, you would be surprised that it's that. If it was drama, you'd be surprised that it's that. It had to go somewhere. Something had to be cut. So, who is the specific person that makes the decision? Here's the $86,000 that has to be cut, or whatever it is. Who makes the decision on how that $86,000 gets allocated, and what is cut? And just to touch on what Linda said about drama, getting a stipend taken away, if I heard correctly, there's two people that got stipends in drama. When we were talking about football, which is something that I also addressed, which I have no problem with football, I think it's a great program, the people that run it are great, huge fan. I have two boys that are sports fanatics. But when you have 11 or 12, can you take one from that, and they can still survive? When drama only has two, how do you take one from only two? Who is the person that makes that decision? Side note about the auditor, is it bad to go with another company? And I don't know how this works, but would it be helpful, since there's so many apparent red flags in a list, to have another company to get a second opinion on something that is so important? So maybe a second company would also be helpful.
So I have Mr. Anderson in the back. I wouldn't typically do this, but he is, I think, trying to answer. And that's really, Julie, if I could bring Mr. Anderson up to the podium, and I can, I'll collaborate. I do, I do want to say, go ahead, Ray, go up, that's fine. There's no one person, I just wanted to say that. So there are, the answers are this, the budget process is a collaborative process. It isn't just the superintendent, it's not just me, it's not just Janine, it's, it's a combination of a lot of things. And as we start to see the deficit areas, that's where the pain comes in, right? That's when you have to start looking at priorities. I think Connie, I heard you say that multiple times in business committee, and all the others, what are our priorities? Our priorities are obviously always kids, and what is important to me may be different than what is important to Mr. Anderson. But at the end of the day, you try to, you try to keep things in pockets, in different areas, so you're not decimating any one area. Mr. Anderson, I'm going to let you jump in, just because I know you, recently, you and I've had a lot of conversation, by the way, Nicole, we did, actually, recently, and actually, over the last couple of months, we've been talking a lot about volunteerism, community, shared services. We've been talking a lot about having people come in and help us out, making sure our staff obviously have the first opportunity if there's funding. But, Ray, you want to jump in there?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to get up and speak. I'm very proud to see my students here who are advocating for things that are important to them. And we are not in a position that we want to cut anything.
No.
And these are painstaking decisions that a lot of time and effort have gone into making. So I want to be very clear with everybody about this process, and this has been a collective process. I have worked with my team at the high school, with the administrative team. We have reviewed a variety of things. We tried to look at all areas, and every area was touched in some way. You know, some clubs that are very close to my own heart, you know, as an educator, are not running, because I had to make tough decisions, as not just I, but our team had to make tough decisions. We don't want anything to go. And we have talked about other, other things, but what, sometimes when you're told that we're, we're looking at a budget, we work collaboratively, and the decisions were made that money had to be cut, we have to make tough decisions. They're not, I don't want to cut anything, believe me. And I think my kids know me well enough to know that. I don't want to cut anything. I'm looking at my three right here. This is not something that we're looking to do, but it's unfortunate reality sometimes. These discussions were painstaking, they involved multiple stakeholders. They involved principals, assistant principals, supervisors, central administrators. And we have talked about other ways to fund these clubs. So it does have to do with stipends. It does have to do with the advisors running the clubs. That's where the money is coming from. So we've talked about, I think Mrs. Lundy was just talking about alternative services. I will gladly take a $1,200 donation to have an advisor run the FBLA. Like, we, I don't believe that that's out of my, I don't know that I can do that, I'm looking at the attorney, but I will be happy to accept your $1,200 to run, I'm not putting you on the spot, but you said...
We have a process for donations.
We have a process for donations.
I always take donations, yeah, we have a process.
But I'm just saying, like, we are willing to find creative ways. I'm looking at Mr. Kriglana, we worked very hard on this. And, you know, we, it's very tough to be in positions like this, when you have to make these decisions. And it is collaborative, and we do ways, we have way pros and cons, and unfortunately, I wish I could make everybody happy. I wish we could run everything. And if there were a pot of money, you know, that were available, that you would like to donate for us, we will take it. But I don't want anybody sitting here having a false impression that anybody wanted to cut any clubs whatsoever. We have a budget issue that we are dealing with as an administrative team. We're dealing with it as beautifully as we can, and as efficiently as we can. But there is a lot that goes on in the background, that is just what it is. So you're asking about who makes decisions. There are many people that have been involved in these conversations, I'm going to say dozens. It's not just me, it's not just Mrs. Miller, it's not just any one person. We discuss this collectively. And we realize that some of the decisions were not going to be popular. We do understand that. And we're always looking for alternative funding, and alternative ways for our students to be involved, in, in as much as we possibly can. We were able to save clubs. We looked painstakingly at clubs that were saying, you know, this is, people were talking earlier about students finding their place. We couldn't agree more. And we tried to find ways that, that every type of student of interests could have something to be a part of. But unfortunately, there were items that were cut, and I am very sorry for that. I wish that weren't the case. We did our best, more than happy to accept any kind of donations to the process Mrs. Miller referenced. We want to run everything. And these are not cuts, by the way. That is not the right word. We are not running them this year, but they are not cut from any plans for the future. The hope is we would be able to bring things back as our budget improves. They're not cuts. They are temporarily on hold.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to come up as well. I appreciate that.
Jennifer Wakeman?
My name is Jennifer Wakeman, a resident of Washington Township. I'm also the president of the Drama Parent Association. I have a son who is a senior this year in high school, and he is actively involved, and has been since his first day, actually at Bunker Hill, in the drama program through middle school. And this is his home, where he finds his home. And while many of the things I wanted to say tonight have already been said, and I don't want to rehash them all, Mrs. Hartong, Mrs. Baker, many of the things that you said I wholeheartedly agree with, and that's what I was going to bring up tonight. What I do want to bring up are some of the things that weren't mentioned, and excuse me while I look at my phone, to look at some of my notes. As was mentioned, the drama club advisor was, not running next year, cut, I don't know now which term to use appropriately, but not going to be happening in the fall and spring semester of this year. While the drama program has other positions, and has not been completely cut from the district, obviously, this position is very important to the program. And the reason for that is, all of us here know probably, or are familiar with, the productions that our high school students put on every year. In the fall this past year, they put on Harry Potter as their fall play, and this spring they did Shrek the Musical. These are phenomenal productions. And I have to say, if you have not been to one, you need to attend, okay? Each production brings a variety of different students. So not every student participates in every production, and not every student in the drama club chooses to participate in the production. They choose to be a part of the club, because they found themselves a home, as was mentioned previously. Some of these students participate in other drama club activities because of other commitments that they have in their lives, whether it's a job, whether it's a sports team, that they can't split their time between drama and sport. But they still have the opportunity to participate with the drama club. The advisor, that position that is no longer this year, does such things as overseas activities that happen outside of the production time. And those things are cabaret nights, these are, one held in the fall and in the spring, where students who may not have the opportunity to be in a production, or have time to be in a production, can come and highlight their talents in front of their peers and their family. And every, I tell you, every single cabaret night, we pack that room, with students, parents, who come out and support those students who perform. They also participate in social events outside of the production, such as the ice cream sociales. They do a yearly trip to New York City to see a Broadway play. This takes coordination of getting all of our students to New York, to the play, and then usually have some sort of lunch before they get back on the bus and come back. A lot of the students in this district are not going to have the opportunity to see a Broadway play. And this is their opportunity as a part of the drama club, to go and see a Broadway play. This summer, we did a, for the second year in a row, we had a summer theater conservatory, where 26 high school students worked with middle school students. We had two sessions. In the morning, we had 41 middle school students come to the high school, and work with our high school students, and do different activities to help to develop their drama skills. In the afternoon, our high school students stayed, and they had their own camp or conservatory, where they worked with professionals who work on Broadway, and professional theater productions. And they came, and they worked with our students individually, in a variety of different skills. These types of activities, and these are just to name a few, because I don't want to go on too long, are the things that are important to our drama program, especially as we move forward, trying to build a drama program within the Performing Arts Academy. And I will tell you right now, if there's not growth in that program, our students will go elsewhere. My son was looking into going elsewhere, and we stayed at Township, and I'm glad he did, because he's had a phenomenal experience. But my fear, as I stand here as a senior parent, yes, I'm, I'm done after this year, you could say, but what gets cut next year? Because this is not a one-time thing, this is not just, oh, this year, and then we'll see what happens next year. We all know, the next year, something else. And I fear of what may happen, not just with the clubs that our students are losing. My son at least still gets to participate in drama. These students here, they, they're losing their club, okay? So my fear is, you all sit here and say, "This year, this year." We need to look forward, because you can't continue to cut and slash, because this district is not going to survive. The students here need an outlet, an extracurricular activity. So, this is my conclusion.
Thank you. Terri Schechter?
I had some questions, but first I wanted to start off with a comment. I was also surprised to hear that there were several board members surprised about the adjustments made to co-curriculars. As Carol pointed out, we all sat in the stadium and saw the presentation where curriculum, co-curriculars were going to be cut across all levels. I actually came up to the podium and asked the board. I didn't know what a co-curricular was until that meeting, so I remember it quite clearly. My intention in my comments tonight were to come up and ask for the policy committee to consider something, although now, after some of the conversations, I'm not quite sure what, how that goes in the committees now. I think that we need to support more financial transparency. I think it might actually help some of the board members as well. Currently, we do the bare required state minimum of reporting and posting the user-friendly budget. Other districts, including Cherry Hill and West Eppert, they post the supporting worksheets for the user-friendly budget, including all the subcodes, as well as the annual comprehensive financial report, which gives a much clearer picture of the actual financial state of the district. I think that's a, something that could be managed with the policy. I appreciate Janine's polite and prompt responses, but whatever is causing a delay, in responding to OPA request, which I made on June 7th, for some deeper dives into financial questions I had, there's a delay, right? So whether it's process or bandwidth, proactively publishing some of these documents would eliminate the need for OPA requests, and hopefully improve transparency, and reduce the staff workload. So my request would be that we would create a policy, and to be discussed in committee, for financial transparency and accessibility to be considered and reviewed, so that within the completion and approval of these documents on an annual basis, they be added to a place that is easily accessible to members of the public. I urge the board to prioritize the creation and formalization of some of these long-term strategic planning foundational items, so that we can not only review this item that I have concerns about, but address other gap areas, where there, where we have the ability to leverage what other districts have had success with, and a clear roadmap to better understanding across the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Sherri Heil?
I really wasn't expecting to come up here for a third time this year. Okay, so I live in the district, I work in the district, and then I have a son who's going to be a senior, well, is a senior technically, I guess. And I apologize, because I was coming up here with like, maybe a couple of things that I had questions about, but as the night has been going on, I'm, I'm more confused. I really, so Julie, I'm going to, so I specifically asked last time, you know, I have an upcoming senior who's going to be getting pictures, and I, my specific question was, what should he be getting pictures of? Because I don't want to take pictures, and then him not have that opportunity, because something might be not happening this particular year. And that's actually happened. So things that he could have done, or would have done, are not going to happen now. And I'm sad that you guys didn't know things that were getting cut. I actually had no idea that you were not aware of specific things that won't be running this year. That, that really kind of, I'm so confused of why that is. I would have thought, I guess, that you guys would have been first, I don't know. I guess I'm trying to understand the process, and I have been asking a lot of questions from so many different people, to try to wrap my head around all of this. Because I do have a senior, who will be filling out applications, and that brings me to my first thing. So I went on wtpss.org, and I went under the employment, and I did this last year too, because of the cuts that were happening. I was curious as to what clubs were listed that would be coming up, that they needed stipends for. for and whatever. So I did that again the other day, and I started to look at things where most normal people wouldn't know to do that, to see what was listed and what wasn't listed. And my understanding is maybe things will be saved, maybe things possibly could come back by a miracle. But my question is, as a senior who will be filling out applications and who is involved in many honors clubs or honor societies, I didn't see them listed. I saw a National Honor Society listed as a person getting a stipend, but like World Language wasn't listed, math, none of those were listed. So my question, I guess, for that is, where are those honor societies happening? They are, all of them, so none of them are cut. Okay. Beautiful. That's wonderful. Good news. Hooray. Okay, so that's excellent. The visual performing arts, I will go down fighting for the arts. I always will because they were so important to me, they were important to my mom, they're important to my boys. We created this visual performing arts, but now we're cutting class, classes aren't running, I keep correcting myself, classes aren't running, I'm being told. Things that are requirement for the visual performing arts, as far as like somebody had mentioned the jazz band, that's not running this year, but that's a really important part for anybody that wants to continue their music education after school. So also, I was informed, or when I was looking for the stipends, pep band wasn't mentioned as existing. The pep band plays music at the basketball games and creates a fun atmosphere, and the cheerleaders cheer to it. I didn't see that listed, and actually for marching band, which is a class, that was a requirement. You had to participate in pep band. So now that's not existing, so I didn't know how that would work. So pay-to-play sports. I have a very well-rounded child who does a little bit of everything. Pay-to-play sports, what's that going to look like? I know sports are beginning, and if people are going to have to put out a certain amount of money, how much money? Do, don't people need to know that if they're going to have to shell out money? Shouldn't they be finding that out now? Or should have already found out if that was the case? So, and is it just sports? Or is it going to be other activities pay-to-play, or pay-to-do, I guess you could say? So I have, was wondering about that. The internships, thank you, Mr. DiCilio, for saying that. But when the academies were established, my son was part of the first year, that was supposed to be one of the beautiful things about joining the academy, was to have internships. Unfortunately, COVID happened, kind of killed some things, but they should have been doing that all along. So that definitely needs to help our students. That would be great to have that happen. For the common people who might not know to look under the employment to find out if things are being cut or not happening this year, can it be an easy way to see what's not going to be happening this year? There are kids, like, there's kids that need to know what their year's going to look like and things to look forward to. So when will those things be said or posted? I will come up later because I have more. Thank you.
I will try to provide a little bit of clarity on the process in terms of how these specific positions are approved or not approved, and why it might be that a board member doesn't know until tonight which specific stipend positions have been cut. So what we're talking about is for an extracurricular activity, typically what will happen is a staff member will be provided, will be paid extra. We call that a stipend. And the way it typically works is, well, it has to work, is that the board gets that as a recommendation to approve a stipend position. So that recommendation comes from the superintendent. So when we talk about which of these positions are being eliminated, the board isn't actually taking an action to eliminate a position. The board only is asked to approve the positions that exist. So the board will, before the start of the school year probably, have a recommendation from the administration, please approve these people for these stipends. And by subtraction, whatever is not there is probably not, is probably being cut. But the decision is all by the administration who makes the recommendations to the board, and that's when the board finds out. And frankly, they are prohibited from getting involved on the actual decision-making level because that would be improper administration of the school. So they have to rely on the administration to make these types of recommendations, and then it's up to them to approve it. So two big points. One is they are asked to approve the recommendations by the superintendent, and number two, it's not even them approving a cut, it's them approving the payment of something when it happens. So that's how it happens, that a board member sitting up here wouldn't know that last week an administrator in the district, you know, made the decision that they were not going to recommend a certain position to the board until that's, until that happens.
Thank you. Joe Tarraborelli.
Joe Tarraborelli, Washington Township. Like I said, a lot of things were answered tonight, so that's great, I guess. So I want to put, I came here a couple years ago begging for a bus. I don't know if anybody, I think you were the, I was begging for the bus to get, I think it was 17 kids for FBLA to their state competition that they earned. And I begged for a bus, and we got the bus. But I want to put into perspective and remind you that when Callie was in middle school, there was no funding. FBLA for middle school really wasn't a thing. Callie made it a thing. Callie ran with it. Callie ran that program in middle school without an advisor because there was no stipend, there was no advisor. She did it, and her dad helped her. And it did well. It did awesome. It was a parent-volunteer, there was no stipend for her dad, and a student that read, that ran this program that, I will remind you, had 17 students go down to, I think it was, where was it? Yeah, Kean University, that's what it was. So it is possible, okay? We have, I get told all the time, there's another program that's student-led. And I think we're forgetting, and Nicole said a lot, I'm also a business owner, I'm on the board for the chamber. We have the people that love this township and love this school. We have the businesses that want to support everyone. We can email them, we can talk to them, we can call them and say, hey, our school needs help. And please forgive me, I'm kind of all over, I have four people's notes on my, on my paper. So I think I'm under this, I get the understanding now that you guys are voting on kind of an umbrella term, that, you know, these extracurricular activity things, we've got to get rid of them. And then underneath those are the little stipend kind of things like FBLA or whatever other program, right? So I'm kind of figuring that part out. You guys are voting for kind of an umbrella, and you don't know what that list of things is until someone comes up here and says, hey, my program was cut. Or, I'm sorry, it's not happening this year. Someone else brought up a point too, is I'm keeping my kids in the school district because we love this school district, but it's now going into August, I can't move. It's too late. So if you take all of her resume and college stuff away from her, I'm stuck here for another year. Because I can't move in a month to find another school, right? It's crazy. So another thing that I wanted to bring up, and someone else had said it, I think it was Nicole, parent volunteers. Callie's dad did it, and they did it great. I'm a United States Air Force veteran. Callie's stepdad is a United States Air Force veteran. There's programs that require veterans. We're here, we're, hi, tell us what we need to do. What's the process? What do we need to do to become volunteers? Give us background checks, give us fingerprinting. What is, where is it going to be posted? That we can say, we're here, we want to help, we understand there's a budget crisis, we are volunteering our time. Tell us how to do it, and I guarantee you, you will have a line of people trying to help you. Mr. Anderson said it's a painstaking process. Painstaking process is my phone blowing up with my daughter and her friends saying, this program isn't going on anymore, and this program, what are we going to do? And Ms. T., we need you to go to the board, because I'm the mouth, and that's what happens. But it's really, these two young ladies stood up, and I can't follow that because, I mean, they're, that's it. That's your bread and butter right there. So please let us volunteer. We have everyone, and there's theater in here, there's business owners in here, there's politicians in here. We've got everything right here in this room that can run these programs for free. So let us do it, tell us how to do it, tell us what we have to do. And I think, you know, that, I think that's it. I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. April Renzetti. And I think we should add to the SAC committee, like a volunteer program. Oh, we have a policy? All right, let's look at that in committee.
Hi. No intentions on coming, let alone speaking, so forgive me, I'm delirious. However, today during ESY, during snack time, I quickly opened up the minutes, and today, about 12 hours ago, the Assistant BA was listed. Any reason that position's not listed on here? Because you got, your problem's fixed. Today, online, that was $132,000. You just told us all of these positions are 78. Why isn't that on here? Why is number 61 the deleted Assistant BA position? Because today, online, 12 hours ago, because it already made it to Facebook, parents were having a fit. 132 for an Assistant BA. This is $78,000. Any response? Because I think they deserve that. That's all I got. There's your co-curricular.
I don't know how I'm allowed to respond to that, like, but...
I mean, it was on your, it was on...
Yeah, she's saying like the item that was deleted, like, can we say what it was?
It's on, it's copy now.
Yeah, it was deleted. That's what was, that's what was there, and it was deleted from the agenda.
To come back later, to be voted on later. That job's gone.
I can't really, I can't. I can't come?
Yeah, that job is not gone. There's conversation, April. That's what we're having. So that job is deleted. That's all I can say.
I mean, I'm not a math major.
That on, on the agenda this evening, that is, that is...
I mean, I'm not a math major. Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to...
Julie, real quick, before we go into executive, can we just put something out, whether it be to the chamber, or, you know, people that came out and what we're interested in either making a donation or volunteering? Is there any communication, whether it be, you don't have to answer now?
Well, I kind of whispered to Annette, like, let's put it into SAC committee, so we want to make sure we do it right.
Okay, and I think, I don't know when it meets SAC committee, but if we want to at least have some kind of opportunity, I mean, we only have so many weeks before school opens. So I don't know when SAC meets and who's on the committee, but I just think that it's prudent for us to address it swiftly.
Is he all ready to get voted on?
No. Can I get a motion to move into executive? Can I get a second? We have to go, we have to go into executive before we vote on anything.
I thought we're only going to go into executive for voting.
We're going into, no. Can I get a second to move into executive? All in favor? Aye.
We said we were going to discuss everything in executive, and then come back out and vote. This is what I'm... Huh? For executive.
Huh?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to approve...
We gotta go cancel.
Sorry, motion to extend the meeting past 11:00 p.m.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
What?
Who did that?
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, motion to approve items one, well, one through nine on the agenda under report of the superintendent and then we're adding a number 10 which is motion to approve senior privilege for students initial CB and BG for the '25-'26 school year. Can I have motion to approve those 10 items?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes to one through nine and abstain on 10.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Abstain on one through three, abstain on seven, yes to the rest.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries.
Under instructional affairs, motion to approve items one and two?
Still move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carry, thank you. Motion to approve item one, first reading of the athletic participation fee program under policy.
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
No.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Motion carried. I have a motion to approve items one through three under student activities and communications.
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries.
Motion to approve items one through sixty... Excuse me, item, items one, what? Oh, you had it there, okay. One through fifty-seven, fifty-nine and sixty, and sixty-two to sixty-six. Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question.
Yeah, Julie, I wanted to say I'm abstaining on a few things because I couldn't attend executive to get information on them, so that's why I'm abstaining on some things.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Aaron, for you. Am I able to vote no on one of the items under M3 or do I have to vote for the entire M3?
It's the co-curricular.
This is the attachment. Like, can she say yes to all except for initials?
Yes, yes, you can.
Okay, perfect.
Do you know what to say?
Yes.
Okay. Any other, any other questions, discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
I am saying yes to all except MS in M3. I'm going to abstain from M6 and I'm going to abstain from M13. Everything else, I'm a yes.
M6 and M13, yeah, because they both involve... And I said noes for M3 for MS. Mr. LaLiberty?
I'm gonna abstain on M15 and 18, yes to the rest.
Fifteen, you said right spot.
Yes, 1-5 and 1-8.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries.
Motion to approve items one through sixty... Excuse me, item, items one, what? Oh, you had it there, okay. One through fifty-seven, fifty-nine and sixty, and sixty-two to sixty-six. Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question.
Yeah, Julie, I just wanted to say I'm abstaining on a few things because I couldn't attend executive to get information on them, so that's why I'm abstaining on some things.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Aaron, for you. Am I able to vote no on one of the items under M3 or do I have to vote for the entire M3?
Let me circle to get them.
Oh, gosh. It's the co-curricular.
This is the attachment.
Thank you. Like, can she say yes to all except for initials?
Yes, yes, you can.
Okay, perfect.
Do you know what to say?
Yes.
Okay. Any other, any other questions, discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
I am saying yes to all except MS in M3. I'm going to abstain from M6 and I'm going to abstain from M13. Everything else, I'm a yes.
M6 and M13, yeah, because they both involve... And I said noes for M3 for MS. Mr. LaLiberty?
I'm gonna abstain on M15 and 18, yes to the rest.
Fifteen, you said right spot.
Yes, 1-5 and 1-8.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
No.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes to one, two and three. Number four, transfers. No to the following initials. Alex, who services LA? SC, JC, MCN, DF, JJ, NHN, CN, SN, LO, AS, AS. Yes to the rest.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Under finance, motion to approve items one through thirty-three.
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, but number thirty-three, have we gotten any information with regard to that?
We have, unable to disclose that information here. Very high level, I can give it to you after the meeting.
You're voting on the contract, you're not voting on what's going on currently. I think the lawyer just said he needs a little, like, a little more time.
That should've been given ahead of time.
Any other comments, discussion? Roll call. Ms. Chilla?
I'm gonna abstain on number six.
I'm gonna abstain on number six, number twenty-eight, and number thirty-three, and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Abstain on number thirty-three, that's thirty-three, yes to the rest.
Mr. Serrano?
No to thirty-one, yes to the rest.
Mr. Ross?
No to thirty-one, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Baker?
No to thirty-one, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Um, yes to everything up to thirty-two, and abstain for thirty-three.
Okay, so, two, three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-three. Okay, let's count again. They all passed. Mm-hmm. Motion to approve items one through four under special education?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Um... I have cards, just...
Yeah, I don't think we have anything on negotiations to report, correct? Uh, Scott, do you want to hang on? We have open, we have open, we're about to open to the public and do new business. Do you want to stay on?
Um, I'm gonna, yeah, I'll stay.
Okay. Is there any items of new business? Nothing? Okay, oh, and I want to mention too, at the June 24th meeting, I abstained on the A5, which is like reimbursement for conferences and stuff like that, but I think I said yes on the A5, and then later said abstained, and so we needed, it's fine in the minutes, but I just want to tell everyone that. Um, can I get a motion to open the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Randy Ford?
Randy Ford, Washington Township. Uh, two, two questions. The first one is, when the board went into executive, I guess somewhere around an hour or so ago, I left the room when it was first voted to go into executive, so I was curious, I don't remember hearing the reading of, like, the statutory requirement, and then also the reason why going into executive, so if that could be clarified, that would be extremely appreciated. And then, on the conflict council, A33, or not A33, um, N, N33, anyway, so my question is, originally, conflict council, at one of the meetings, I don't know if, I think it might have been March 25th, when this conflict council was initially engaged, at some portion during the public meeting, I believe it was, you know, there was some discussion maybe before going into executive, or something along those lines, and, you know, one of the board members asked whether, like, okay, we're gonna go in, and this is regarding the superintendent. Um, and then today, you know, Ms. Clancy asked a question about what this is, I think before you went into executive tonight, it might have been Ms. Baker that said something to the effect of, like, are we voting on the superintendent, and then that kind of, you know, you went into executive. But now Mr. Serrano's saying, I can give you high level to Ms. Clancy on the conflict council contract, and I'll, can do that after the meeting, and then, Ms. Kuzempel, I think you stated something to the effect of, we think conflict council just needs a little more time. So, my question is, here's my guess. My guess is conflict council is the attorney who is handling the investigation of Dr. Hibbs. That's my guess. I don't know, because, you know, personnel, decisions, and everything else. My question, though, is, if that is partially what the scope of conflict council is doing, and I think Ms. Kuzempel is still conflicted with respect to Dr. Hibbs, how can you vote yes on that contract? Um, and those are my two questions, thank you.
What I read in was just the same as what I read in the first time we went in, there were no different, they were all the same items, personnel, negotiations, attorney-client privilege, legal matters, and senior privilege.
He wants to know.
There was no conflict regarding the vote on conflict council.
Okay.
And just to make sure it was clear, that the, the public, the executive session notice was read, but, but you're right, it was, it was a little bit delayed, so to make sure it was clear that, I mean, that, uh, the board, pursuant to Section 8 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the board moved into, or the board excluded from the prior portion of the meeting, the public, for the discussion of personnel, attorney-client privilege, legal matters, and senior privilege. And then, yeah, and then they, they also read further result, let it be further resolved, that discussion of such subject matter in executive session can be disclosed to the public if any action is taken by the board, either at the resumption of the public session, at the conclusion of the executive session, or at a public session at some later date. And obviously, action was going to be taken afterwards.
Uh, actually, I had to bring my phone up, because I got a couple more things that I had to write down on my, on my card here. First things first, I'm gonna beat a dead horse here, why is Dr. Hibbs not back up at the dais? I've beaten a dead horse, but I'm tired of no answer. No one seems to, everybody talks about transparency, but you're not giving any answers out. I don't give a damn if you don't like him personally, bring him back up here, do his job, we're paying him to stay home and do nothing. Another comment I want to make is about the process of, you know, it was brought up about suspending policies to fit an agenda. Why are we allowing people to just suspend policies when they feel it's necessary, instead of taking it to a vote? Let's just say, oh, they're just gonna suspend it, and let's face it, this board's got a 5-4 vote majority, whatever that, whatever the five of them want, they're gonna get, doesn't matter. So, let's do the process as it's intended. Don't just ram it down everybody's throat, because we know what's gonna happen, just have some decorum when you do your suspensions, or any other type of crap you guys do. Number three, certificated staff, I made mention of this, or actually, some people made mention of it, we have staff that we could fill certain positions if they were certificated in certain areas, that might cut down on some cost for out, from, you know, having to bring an outside group in to do, to handle things for the students. I don't know if that's something that has been addressed, where maybe we could bring someone in who can certify that staff, or certain staff to do, I don't know, crisis intervention, or special ed assistance, or something like that, to where we can try to save some of that money from outside sources coming in. I don't know if that's an option, but it would be nice if it could be addressed. Uh, and the last thing, Nicole Lanuti kind of took my thunder, but it's okay, because I respect the woman a lot, about potential parents running school extracurriculars, you know, you just heard from two parents that they're willing to donate their time to run these, run these programs. So, is that something that's been, is that something that's been approached, or is that just being thrown to the wayside as well? I don't think that this board has really exhausted all resources available to do these things, and I'd really appreciate it if the infighting would stop, and you guys actually focus on what's important, and that's this district and these kids. Thank you.
Just to clarify, there's a board policy that talks about suspending board policies. It requires a vote of the board. No board member is unilaterally, just willy-nilly saying, we're gonna ignore this policy. The reason that boards have the ability to suspend policies is because sometimes, that's needed to, to do so quickly, and there's not enough time to go through a first and a second reading to change the policy. Also, sometimes, because of a specific situation, an exception needs to be made, but it doesn't make sense to completely change the policy. Uh, so, there's, there's no, to the extent there is a request that the proper procedure be used, it has been. Uh, and in terms of the questions about personnel, there's no discretion, the board members don't have discretion to decide whether or not to talk to you about personnel matters. They can't, they can't. So, you're welcome, and you clearly can, come up to public comment every time, but they can't give you information about it.
Could I just say one thing about crisis prevention? Um, so, we use Crisis Prevention Institute here in Washington Township, and I do use internal trainers and certifiers in this district. They are also people who work with our staff for training of many different things, so just, just so you're aware. Absolutely.
Hi, Dana Zilier again. Um, I just had a couple of questions. I know Mr. Anderson, when he was taking, was very clear that he didn't like the words cuts to clubs or activities, that it was not being held this year. So, I have a two-part question. One, I know some of our sports teams have a freshman JV and varsity, and others only have JV and varsity. Are any of those being cut, or being looked at being cut for this coming school year? And then, also, based on what Mr. Anderson said, and what I've known about the budget for the last several years, and the huge deficits, do we, as the public, have any reason to expect that any clubs not being held this year would automatically be held next year? Where would that money be coming from if we can't find it this year?
I'm trying to remember the questions here. So, sports, no, there are no reductions, to my knowledge, of any athletics. Um, if you recall, when the initial budget was proposed, there were several sports that were on the initial list, that, actually, we had another acting superintendent at the time who spoke very passionately about that. We had a lot of students come to the podium. Long story short, ultimately, the final budget did not include those cuts. As far as Mr. Anderson's remarks regarding, um, clubs, and he, he said not cuts, or extracurricular, not cuts, I think really what he's trying to say is, just because it isn't available this year, it could be available next year. I can't speak to that, because I don't know what that budget looks like right now. But obviously, everything that we look at, through the course of the budgetary process, we would always look at the participation, and the willingness for students to participate in those activities. Some of the clubs really, just really didn't run, that, they had stipends attached to them, but they haven't, they haven't run, so they would be among the cuts, but some of the clubs, like we heard about today, the extracurricular, um, obviously, that's always under consideration. I can't say I'm putting that back in this year, because obviously, if the funding was there, we would have done that. But we have heard other options that we obviously, we heard tonight, and we're gonna consider. Did I answer, I think I got it all right?
Thank you, Annette.
I think, just to follow up a little bit on what Randy was talking about in relation to conflict council, first a question. You know, a lot of times when you guys talk about adding, doing something, you, you talk about a cap, to make sure we're watching spending. Do we have any cap on the conflict council? To, you know, we wanted to do it on stuff that was affecting our kids, I hope we're doing it here, too, to make sure the board is aware of exactly what's going on. And then, to follow up on Mr. Ford's question, you know, there has never been a vote by this board to investigate Dr. Hibbs. I thought, in action, again, somebody needed that, but can, just talking about process, how is this council getting direction on the investigation? I don't think one board member is allowed to dictate, so is the whole board involved, I would hope? Again, just a process, you don't have to go into the details, but, you know, it's the board's job, I thought, to, to, you know, handle something like that, and not any one person who can give updates, and, you know, it, it should be regular, agenda-driven, and, you know, so we know what we're spending our money on, and what's happening. But again, I do hope, if there is not a cap on it, can you explain why you wouldn't put a cap on that, but you would in trying to transition? I remember Mrs. Miller talking about the special ed person that left, and we brought her back for some hours, and Mrs. Baker was insisting on there being a cap for what we spent. So, I just want to make sure we're being consistent, when we're looking at our dollars, that we're putting caps where we need to.
We'll take that into consideration.
Um, just, uh, two questions. Um, one, while, right before you guys went into break, I did tell Ms. Miller and Mr. Anderson that the Chamber of Commerce is going to be donating the $1,200 that Mr. Anderson said to be able to save FBLA. But Ms. Miller just made a comment saying, I can't promise you I'm bringing it back this year. So, if we do that, will that save FBLA? Number, that's number one. There is, when we were talking, when Mr. Anderson came up and explained, you know, answered the questions that I had last time, Ms. Miller and Mr. Anderson both said, changed it from, I, I know that nobody wants to cut anything, nobody wants to cut jobs, nobody, that's a given. I know that there's nobody sitting up here that says, I want to take someone's job away, and I want to take someone's sports away, or whatever it is. But the word priorities came in to play three separate occasions, priorities. I stood up here a thousand times and talked about priorities, and about the kids that now have 15 minutes without an aide in their day to get on and off a bus, that's a safety issue, that's a priority. How did you approve 12 football stipends? And how are you approving all of, and it seems like I'm coming after football, and I'm not, it's just the highest number that I could think of at this moment. Where's the priority? There are other things that you approved that don't seem priorities. A child getting hand-fed, and their diapers changed, and being safely put on and off a bus, and their right hand being there, not being there for 15 minutes of the day, that's a priority over any of this. FBLA, sports, golf, gymnastics, it's all great, but when you use the word priority, a student's day, their safety, and their literal function of the day is a priority, and now you have a whole slew of children that you made no priority for 15 minutes of a day. So, when we talk about priorities, let's go back to that 15 minutes, and if you need to prioritize money, unfortunately, there has to be cut somewhere to make sure those kids are safe for 15 minutes of the day. And then, my last question was, um, oh, just, when we're talking about priority, I, you said it's a collective decision on who decides what departments lose what, how many, what, this is the umbrella of, this is how many programs and clubs are being taken away, and then collectively, you work on what gets taken away. So, who is the collective team that decides what priority is? Who are the people that decide that football is priority over drama? That FBLA is not a priority over DECA? Or that any type of club or sport is a priority over special ed? Who is the team of people collectively that doesn't decide, my first question, on who and what, who decides priority?
I can't really answer the questions, I don't know if you want to, like, I don't know the answers to this.
Yep, the, um, just prior to going back into exec, yes, I did get information about a donation, so once that's approved, Mr. Anderson absolutely can apply it to that, to that extracurricular activity. to that, um, extracurricular activity. That, that is definitely at his discretion. Um, and I did explain there's a process for that. As far as priorities, um, and budget, that's a collective decision, that's central, that's building level, that's administrators, that include supervisors, it includes building principals. Um, they take a look at the, at the data, they look at participation, there's a lot that goes into that, but it is not just one person who's making that decision. So, it's not, and it's also not a central-level decision, it's, it's a decision where you see collectively people in the room, um, at many meetings, also representing the local level, which would be the schools.
Madison Ambrose?
Um, so, I came up last, two months ago, whenever the last time I was here, and I asked about E-Rate. Um, I'm asking about it again, because I never saw any kind of discussion or anything about it, uh, but E-Rate is a government-funded program, it's overseen by the FCC. Okay, do we post that or anything on the website? Because I know that we have, like, the...
I'll let Janine go when you're not much of a, like, telling you that we can do it.
Okay, all right, perfect. Just because part of that is also, like, making sure that stuff is available to the public for access, so that we know, like, members of the public know what they can request from the school district, as far as, like, a hotspot, or like, anything like that. Um, so that would be great to see that, like, on the website and updated, so that everybody could know. Um, my second question, co-curricular activities, before I left, something that I had started laying the groundwork for was for a student-run Chromebook, uh, repair program. Um, if we're in the, you know, business of having community volunteers, that's something I would definitely love to come do. I taught classes at my local community center in Glassboro for computer literacy, um, so if there's anything that we needed as far as, like, clubs and stuff for students, that's definitely something, um, I think you can reach out to anybody in the community for, because there's definitely, like, people, the member, members of the public have said, people are willing to help. Um, and even if it's on a volunteer basis instead of a stipend, it's definitely something we should look into. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Janine, did you want to say anything about E-Rate?
Um, I just, so, i- it is a mandated, um, process, and we do follow that, so if you have specific items you want to say, just like, send me an email, or, um, you can call the purchasing department, and they have all the documents.
Okay, um, I just didn't get, I don't know if I asked this question, is pay-to-play gonna be only sports? And the thing is, is if it's not, if it won't be brought up to another meeting till the end of August, and sports have already started, is it just sports, or is it other activities that people would have to pay for? Was there an answer to that?
Are you, is that all your comment? You did ask this question before, so I was just answering.
I just, I didn't...
Right now, it's only sports, and given the conversation, I think we can talk about it for other things. I think that's probably our intention, is to discuss it.
Okay.
Um, and then, in terms of your kids finding out when things will not be happening this year? I don't know. When, when, do you want to? Like, when will students know what the official clubs are that are available?
So, that'll be posted on our website. Um, Mr. Anderson definitely could answer that better, in, in terms of the when. He's gonna have to see actually who, you know, applies for facilitators for these, for these activities.
Okay.
Okay.
They'll follow the process they do every year for that.
Okay. Um, also, because I work at an elementary...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Oh, we're not supposed to go back and forth, but... I'm sorry. Um, elementary school, so Future Acts, I guess, so if the only clubs are supposed to be our safety and drama, I think you said at the elementary level, um, like, Future Acts is a community-based, like, they do so many things for the community, so I, just all, all clubs are cut at the elementary level? Or are that still open for possibilities? Or...
I don't have that list here.
Are you done? I'm done.
You finished?
I know, everybody's tired, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We all are, yeah, it's, it's fine.
Understood.
Um, I don't have that list here, no, not, not everything is gone. There definitely, um, that, that is something that we looked at for all levels. I can't speak to exactly what it is at the elementary level, I don't, I don't want to misspeak publicly, but, um, Gretchen Gerber definitely has that list, I know that was something that was near and dear to her heart, um, but that'll, that information, I'll make sure that, if you want to reach out, you can reach out to her, I wouldn't reach out this week, but next week, definitely, she would be able to give that information.
Awesome, sorry, thank you.
Okay, bye.
Can I have a motion to close to the public?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.